Today is the 11th of March, 2025, and this is the town council meeting. If you would silence your phones, we will have invocation by Alderman Kontois, Pledge of Allegiance by Alderman Saucy, please rise.
Lord, in these troubled times, grant us the peace that surpasses understanding. May our hearts be filled with compassion, our minds with wisdom, and our actions with justice. Please bring healing and reconciliation to our community and discernment to those who are entrusted to lead it. Loving God, we seek understanding and peace. We humbly ask for your guidance. Open our hearts and minds to see beyond our own perspectives and grant us the ability to connect with others with compassion and empathy. May peace settle within our souls and may we be instruments of your peace in the community of Abida and the world. In your name we pray.
Amen.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Okay, this evening, we're going to start off with a public hearing. Number one, under public hearing on your paper, Discussion Instrument 2025-001, An Ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abida Springs to make amendments to the text of Part Nine, Planning and Zoning and Development, Chapter Two, Zoning Regulations, Section Nine through 218, Commercial District, Section Nine to 18.2, C2, Highway Commercial District, and Section Nine, 205, Definitions to Update Standard and Clarify Existing Regulations Based Upon the Abida Springs Master Plan. With that being said, yeah, Ms. Kara, you want to, are you gonna, are you handling this or is, oh, okay, okay.
So just to give a brief overview of what this first ordinance is, is it's regarding the commercial district within the Town of Abida Springs Code of Ordinances. It works to bring up-to-date what the current ordinances are with what the intention of the master plan is, which included a lot of engagement and ways to ensure community character, to support businesses, and things like that. And so it adds additional standards as well as it adds some definitions to the Court of Ordinances as well, so that when we're talking about things, we know what the actual definitions are. How in-depth would you like me to go? Is that good?
Alex is going to be here for the adoption part, right? She hopes to be here as well. So primarily the public hearing is for the public comment.
Yeah, just the old, that's fine.
Plus tonight, she's going to be here tonight. Was it a little point already?
Oh, sorry. The question was how can we discuss something and ask questions if we have, it hasn't been discussed? That was the question, right? So what do we ask?
There'll be another part for public comment. Questions happen the other presentation occurs later. This would be for people who, like the board of Aldermen, or people who saw what was introduced and had an opportunity to read that. They may have some questions at this point. They'll get an additional opportunity for more questions after the more in-depth discussion takes place prior to this adoption.
So, do you want me to make a comment? So in general, I think, just to give a more simplistic overview, this is because we had to modify some things in the commercial code to update them so that we could then lift the moratorium that we currently have had for several years on commercial zoning. So generally speaking, the modifications that they have made are fixing definitions and getting rid of old things like tanneries and things that don't come, you know, don't make any sense to Abida. And as, you know, just an alderman who's read it and a planner, I feel like they're moving in the right direction. And I think I've talked to Alex previously at the, at the last meeting about a couple of things we had comments on, you know, such as the marquee sign and some things like that. She's already gotten those comments, so I don't have any additional comments at this time. I do want to know if there is a place where the general population can see the, the full draft, if they want to review it more specifically, since there are no copies in the room tonight.
It's in the, ordinance is in the packet, and so that outlines what the recommendations are for the commercial district changes.
It's the same ordinance that was introduced on the last meeting. It's been reformatted, basically. So it is posted on the website currently with the formatting changes. It doesn't change the content, other than the strike throughs have been deleted. So just includes what typically parks. No, there's no packet. The packet is posted on the website.
If you want me to speak briefly through the packet, I'm happy to do that.
I just had a couple of questions about it, about that. On the list of things where it says neighborhood market, does it, does that have a size to it? Is there a size that the neighborhood market could be? Could it be a, a small one or a big one or whatever? Something I'd like to define out a little bit. And I see, I see here, I missed something here on the size of that, okay. Another one is the parking spaces. I, I really believe that's not enough. That's not enough parking. We have one, one space for every 300 feet. I think we should have more parking spaces available because everybody drives to everything. And let's see, under marquees, I want, I'd like it to say that there's no neon signs. I really don't, I think we ought to keep those neon signs out of town. And then on the facade transparency, where they require windows, why is that? Is that some kind of architectural thing? I see that it says you can block them out. I mean, you can make them dark, but do we, we have to have a, a windows and, I guess, picture windows, huh?
It's to support, as people walk around downtown and you create more of an engagement between the businesses and the people walking around, it's so that, you know, as you're walking, you can kind of see what's going on. People can see out into the street, and it just creates a more vibrant and collaborative experience.
I think it might also be in line with some of the historic regulations, so it kind of, you know, coincides with that.
And then I wondered about the tree planting and all that in 25 feet, kind of will make us look like California. And when I go out to California, I find, it's hard to find places because I can't see the buildings, but, but other than that, that's all I had about that one.
And just to back up a little bit, as far as the overall process, I don't know if anyone has been to any Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, but these are kind of some initial amendments, as was mentioned, because the commercial moratorium has expired. But we're going through a comprehensive process of looking at all the different districts, making sure it meets the community character, bringing it up to date with the master plan, and so on. So in a lot of ways, this will be iterative, and there will be other ways to see information and to weigh in.
Kara, can you announce when that meeting is going to be, the open house for the updates?
It is April 2nd.
Is it April 2nd? Yeah. So April 2nd, you know, anybody can come and go. Would you know what the timing is? I think it's five to seven. Is that right?
I would need to look. I think it went out on the utility bills.
I could look it up real quick, but from five to seven on April 2nd, they'll be, the planners will be in here, and you'll be able to look at sort of the full proposed changes for commercial and some of the zoning changes as well. So they'll have maps, and you'll be able to, like, more informally, just come in and ask questions and see the document as a whole. What's in this packet tonight are just, like, minor amendments to certain vocab, you know, certain definitions. So it's, even if you had it in front of you, it's not going to make a whole lot of sense because it's like, change this line to that line, but it's not the totality of the commercial standards. But you'll be able to see that, I believe, at that April 2nd open house, so you might want to drop in on that.
And not only that, but at the planning and zoning meetings every Thursday, we're also, so we talked, just overview, what is this process, and then about residential districts. And so it'll be kind of bite-sized pieces there as well.
I was also asked to remind everyone that you cannot speak from the floor. If you want to speak, you're going to have to get up and go to the podium. We can't catch it on the recorder, and we can't catch it on the YouTube livestream, so please don't speak from the floor. If you want, raise your hand, and we can get you up to the podium where you can be on a mic. Thank you.
I just want to say, if you look at it, mostly it's for clarification, is, is the way I look at everything. They would have two words in a sentence, and then they have added some clarification, so it, it actually speaks and has a convoluted, it has, has a continuity where you can actually read it and understand it. And that's, I think that's great. Thank you.
Comments?
No, I just think we should emphasize what Janet mentioned. This is not the introduction tonight. This was introduced before. So just so everyone knows, we're not introducing an ordinance tonight and voting on an ordinance tonight. This was introduced prior to that, prior to tonight, two weeks ago. When was that first thing? Three weeks ago?
Three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago when we had our board meeting.
Okay, moving on to, oh, yeah, public, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is supposed to be a public hearing, and we really ought to know what we're hearing about. Now, the, the packet was put out, but it was not put out in a reasonable length of time for a state. It wasn't, wasn't out by four o'clock. I don't know, sometime between four o'clock and this meeting, it was put out. So that doesn't leave us enough time, really, to absorb much. Now, the last, at the last meeting, it's on, that packet is out there now, but it wasn't out there before the meeting, because, again, I was checking before the meeting and came up and said, hey, you're, you're announcing a new ordinance, but we're not seeing it. And I was, you know, told, okay, it's out there. But again, the public really deserves to have a, a better shot at reading and commenting on stuff in advance. By posting a new ordinance well in advance of the meeting it's going to be a public hearing about. And furthermore, even if there is a public hearing, as there is today, I've said before, and I still think it, although others disagree, that it shouldn't be voted on at the same meeting, because you, even if you've seen it before and looked at it, you haven't had time to consider it. And you haven't had time to consider the public comment that you get either, if you're going to vote on it a few minutes after you hear it proposed and introduced. Now, that, that part aside, I have a particular objection to one of the changes that's made in the zoning, which I did manage to find and pick out, which is that the commercial zone is changed to allow gas stations and get a car repair. I think 29, somewhere around there. Before, if you wanted to have a gas station, it had to be in the highway commercial, which was only at the edge of town. By putting this in, it would be possible to build gas stations right in the town center. And car repair had previously been relegated to light industrial zone, and now it's being put in the town center. And I've never heard any reasonable explanation of why that would be a good thing for the town, or discussion about why that would be a good thing. I think it would be a terrible thing for the town, because gas stations and car repairs are invariably sources of a great deal of pollution and are very hard to clean up after. And putting that in our historic district, in the real historic district, not the fringey parts, would be a big step backward for the town. So I urge you, at the very least, to take that out before continuing with it. And I have another question, which is just a question, really, because there's a map attached to this packet, which shows some of the zoning, and there's a, a yellow bit and a brown bit for the residential and commercial, but I live in the gray bit in the middle, and I don't know what it is. And if someone could explain what's going on with that gray bit.
Stuart, you just brought my attention to your reference to number 29. We're going to need to make a technical correction that I wanted to note, because gas stations are listed as number 29, and then a pertinent structures is 28, and then mixed use is number 29 again. So the numerical reference is out of order, Kara, so we will be making a technical correction to that sequence.
Yeah, we have two 28s and two 29s.
Yeah. Farm stand or farmer's market is 28, and a pertinent structures are 28 also, so.
Okay.
Cecy Wigan, Abida. I'm just a little confused, as we make comments, y'all take them into consideration, and then possibly they're, how do we know if they actually are accepted or entered into it? At the next meeting or tonight?
It would have to be tonight if we're going to the document.
Okay. I will agree with Stuart that I don't think we should have gas stations and car repair
If this is going to be our opportunity to comment on this, I would like to agree with that. Gas stations, we have two in town already, really? Another one? And car repair, I think that's out of character for an historic area.
Could I miss all the meetings? Yvette Randolph, can we, can you show the map that shows the proposed amended zoning districts, Leanne, please? And you may not even have to show it. So there's an outline of Abida's, where Abida goes to, but these don't extend out to that, like, it doesn't extend down my property or South Winds Estates or to Dog Pound. Is there a reason for that?
Sorry, can you ask that question again? I probably could help answer it.
So this is South Winds, I assume, and this is, so why does this not extend all the way down to the end of?
So this map that you're looking at, this map is the historic.
Okay.
South Wind and the east side is not historic.
So like, on my property right now, there's a historic overlay, so that's not, I guess that's what I'm asking, like, that's, none of that's changing? This is, yeah, yeah, if we can just, that's all.
I just wanted a clarification of the map of, like, what. I think one of the things that's happening is we're talking about two ordinances at once. There's two ordinances here. We were talking about the number one, and then Stuart brought up number two, which is a different ordinance.
So the map that you're seeing now is about the second ordinance. Right now, there's two districts on the zoning map that are hyphenated, and they're commercial historic and residential historic.
Mr. DeHavillier, they need to sit down. They can't see the tree. Thank you.
So these are map districts that are hyphenated, commercial historic and residential historic. It's not the all-other purview of the historic district, which is quite a bit larger. And so what this map is doing is saying there's a historic overlay that goes on top of other zoning districts, and there's residential, and there's commercial. And this is clarifying the two different uses of the base zoning and the overlay district. So this map, it doesn't show all of what historic has purview over?
No, because that's definitely one historic on my property right now. It's got, like, only 150 historic over there in the front, so, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that.
So one of the things that they're, that they're trying to do is to clarify, in our original code, we have a historic district. And then you also have an overlay over the corridors in which historic has purview. The historic district has development standards. It has setbacks and that type of thing, whereas historic purview means you go before historic, and they approve whatever you're building on there. And there was no clarification in that historic district, which is what you see here, is what is called historic district, either residential or commercial. There was no clarification in that about what the underlying zoning was. And so it was creating some confusion about if you could build a commercial building on a residential, if they're both in the historic district. And so this is clarifying what the underlying zoning is, and everything will end up with a historic overlay over it. So nothing is going to be a historic district. It'll be an overlay over an underlying zoning, so that it clarifies things. But what you're missing, like, I know Stuart had asked about why the gray part was not in there, because that zoned meant town culture. It still has historic overview, but it's a completely different zone that has different uses than residential and commercial. So I hope that clarified things for you.
It sounds a bit confusing, but it's actually making things easier, because you have the overlay and the base, and you know which to go to for different regulations.
I just wanted to add, for the people that haven't seen it yet, that the gas station is regulated to two pumps, no more than two pumps. Just wanted to clarify that.
Byron Arman, I live on Seventh Street. I, I do know that there's, in addition to what was commented earlier, there's two gas stations, but there's also a mechanic shop as well down 36. I think it would be appropriate to make sure that you've got the verbiage in there to grandfather the existing gas stations and mechanic shop into it.
Yeah, those would be.
And consider not allowing any future development of that kind.
Those would be, if someone were to strike gas stations and mechanic shops, those would be considered legal non-conforming uses, because the zoning has changed, or in this theory, would have changed, they would still be able to operate.
However you want to interpret it. I just wanted to make sure that those places get protected, since they're already there.
Right. Anybody else?
That Sandra Slifer, just real quickly, you know, it's highly unlikely that, you know, a big gas station, any gas station is going to come in with only two pumps. It's just is not economically feasible for them to do that now. So I don't think it's, I don't think it matters that it's there, but I don't think it's, it's just not going to happen. But that, in terms of the signs, that I have to agree with EJ, that, you know, and I would go so far as to say external illumination only. I think that one electronic sign in town is more than enough. And, you know, that, you know, guarding against this, you know, that external illumination, you know, was in the planned corridor overlay on Highway 21, that, and I lived along that corridor for 10 years, and, yeah, developers didn't really like it, but it was in the planned corridor overlay regulations, and it looks a lot better, that it's, you know, that there's not all the flashing and, you know, this, you know, going on. And so external illumination only for the, the signs would be my recommendation. The second question I have is regarding the parking lots. We already have a situation between Walgreens and Auto Zone where we do not have cross connectivity. If you are at the Walgreens store, you must go out onto Harrison Avenue in order to get to the Auto Zone. And I could kick myself for not just jumping up and down and saying, no, this is a mistake, don't do this. So I would just like to make sure we have in our ordinances that there must be cross connectivity from one parking lot to another, so that you, someone who is shopping there can easily get from one place to another without having to go out on the street. It makes a huge difference in terms of traffic flow and safety. And, yeah, I just want to make sure that that is part of the parking lot, you know, regulation. We can't go back and undo what's been done, but we sure as heck can prevent it from, you know, taking place, you know, you know, in, in future developments, so, just.
Sandra.
Yes, please.
That's, that's an outstanding point, Sandra. Outstanding point.
That is a good point, and I'm wondering if you're requesting that cross connectivity only on major highways?
I would say.
Because that's typically where you see it.
Cross connectivity, I think that, you know, that, you know, you, you know, that you don't know what's going to be developed next to you, that having a stubout, which is what was required, again, on Highway 21, that one development had to have, there was a stubout that was there, and it was that the next development connected to that stubout, you know, and that they didn't, they were not, they couldn't open until they did it. And we had some, you know, businesses that jumped up and down, and, you know, that they were delayed, you know, in terms of, of opening, you know, until they're, they did that cross connectivity, so it's just.
Typically, that is something that is required only on major corridors, as opposed to, you know, a small-scale mixed-use kind of corridor.
If you've got commercial that can go in, that's adjacent to you, you know, Reagan, then I feel like it's something that is, you know, that it's not an, a burden to do this, you know, regardless of where it is, you know, that, but again, if you're in a commercial.
I'm just asking your question. So you're saying everywhere commercial.
I am. I'm saying, you know, that if you've got commercial that is going to go in next to you, that there should be a provision for that cross connectivity, you know, and, and people could have disagreed with me. I, I understand that. I'm just pleading my case that I feel like it is a safer and more, you know, friendly, you know, way to do things, and that once people get used to it, they really like it a lot.
Okay. Kara, can I ask you another question? Like, I just wanted to have you be able to answer it at the, at the mic. I wasn't trying to excuse you, that, was that your final comment? I wasn't trying to excuse you, that, was that your final comment? That was the, that was the end of your comment? Okay. As a follow-up, I'm trying to ask her process question. Kara, so if people are making comments, obviously, tonight, and the board wants to consider those, our options are either to make amendments to this draft and pass it as such, or if we were to not pass it or pass it in full, there will be other opportunities to massage these regulations, correct? So talk about that for a minute, please.
You could adopt it with these changes tonight, so that would be something that you agree on, or maybe that's a little bit more minor. This is important because the commercial moratorium is expiring, but it's not the last time that the commercial district will be touched. So you, there's also some of the, maybe the more things that need more research, or the way that they impact other parts of the code of ordinances, like parking, those would be things that would be included in the coming months. Was there a third part to what you suggested?
I mean, that's the point I was trying to make, is that we are up against a deadline because the moratorium is expiring, and so we will basically have just our old code not amended if we don't pass something. But if we pass something and we say, hey, we're taking your comments into consideration, and we want to work on these things with our planning consultants and come back and refine it, we still have the new code in place if we pass something. So I just wanted to understand, make sure the public understands the process, is that it's kind of important for us to not have the moratorium expire and not have a new code in place. So that's all I'm saying.
And the historic district manual is being updated right now, too. So this will be looked at again to make sure that commercial and historic are working in tandem, so it will be touched again.
And we do not currently have a commercial area that's not under historic purview, correct?
I believe you're right.
I think that that's part of why they did it the way that they are, is because historic is reviewing their guidelines. A lot of the items that are under historic purview, like the lit signs, you can't have a lit sign in the historic district. So they already have purview over that. So they tried not to incorporate everything that's in historic into these changes, because then you've got a lot of, a lot more information, number one, and they're trying to catch the things that aren't under historic purview already. Now, we do need to make the changes and have those things added to this code because it's possible in the future that we'll have commercial areas that aren't under historic purview. So we want to catch that. But in the meantime, we don't currently, I don't believe, have any commercial areas that would fall underneath this that are not under historic purview.
So, okay, all that said, I have one more comment about this map. Along the southern border of the town here, that's Harrison Avenue, and sooner or later, maybe not in my lifetime, but sooner or later, that Harrison Avenue is going to get cut through to 36. And I think that that bottom layer should have some commercial availability there, because I think it's pretty much undeveloped right now, it's just surveyed as lots. But I think we could make some commercial property along there. I know one guy at least would like it to be commercial, right there on the corner. And so we probably could make some nice stores there and get some revenue for the town. But like I said, sooner or later, it's going to happen, so.
I think it's important to make sure that everybody understands, we are not rezoning any piece of property here. There is no rezoning happening here. These that are there are already this zone. The only thing that we are clarifying is the historic overlay on these properties. So the actual rezoning, that, that's not part of any of this. Right. The only thing that's happening is we're updating the standards for buildings that are built in those specific areas right there.
Janet, when was this ordinance last updated? 30 years ago?
Probably... I believe it was like the 80s or 90s.
Under uses, you have number 17 Hotel Motel with less than 10 rooms. So you're saying hotels with nine rooms? Or you're saying with 10 rooms or less? Okay, so does that need to be clarified, or are you saying it can only be nine rooms?
That, it says less than 10.
It says less than 10, so that would be nine rooms. So does it need to be clarified to 10 rooms or less?
The alderman can certainly choose to change it. This is what planning and zoning passed forward, and that what they chose. So that is something for them to certainly discuss.
And is there any opportunity for someone, not me, for someone who owns, say, six acres and wants to build a hotel in the style of the old Long Branch Spa Hotel with 20 to 30 rooms in that style that would fit wonderfully in this town and goes back to the history of this town? Is there an opportunity for someone to ask for that allowance? Or is this just going to say, no, you absolutely have to build a 10-room or less? Because having been, the manager of the Abida Springs Hotel, which has five rooms, they're not making a huge profit. They're not really being able to survive on that. You definitely need more rooms to that. And you see how much space the hotel with five rooms takes up. It's not a lot of space. So is there opportunity for someone who has a bigger parcel to come in and say, following the guidelines that will be historic guidelines, build something that is a 20-room hotel?
Well, they could apply for a variance.
Okay. But, and was there any, what's that? Okay, well, so, I mean, I just, I want you guys to think about that 10-room because it's not really feasible for someone to create a beautiful, decent boutique hotel with nine rooms, so.
Well, Kara, do you want to answer that?
What I was going to mention is, this is just one commercial district, and so there's other, you know, opportunities for more intense or mixed-use districts. And I'm also taking notes on all of this, too, so nothing is final. But this is just one kind of part, like a correction almost, and then we're thinking comprehensively about it as well. So it may be that some areas are less than 10, others are greater, or there's a height maximum or things like that.
Right. And again, this is just the area that is on this particular map, so it's not the totality of the town. And so there's a larger parcel that would have a 20 to 30-room hotel would not even fit on, like, I don't think, in the vicinity of these places that are in this map.
John Dehammecourt. I believe I heard, Eric, that you said the service stations would be allowed two pumps.
Yes.
Okay. That's ambiguous. When you pull up to a service station and you take the nozzle off the machine, that's a dispenser. Pumps have not been associated with dispensers for 50-plus years. It used to be the pump had, the dispenser had a pump in it, and it sucked the gas out of the tank that's underground. Now the pumps are in the tanks, and those lines are pressurized to the dispensers. 50 years ago, a dispenser had one nozzle. Now dispensers have as many as four on each side to accommodate the four flavors of gasoline and diesel. So are you saying two pumps in two tanks? Or are you saying two dispensers with a potential of eight nozzles in each?
Well, not, having been the one that originally wrote it, I mean, I'm thinking what probably most people think. They think a pump, like, the one thing that, you know, you pull a dispenser out of, and then you pump gas, right? So you might be right, it might need to be reworded to say two dispensers.
Each having a maximum of eight nozzles, four on each side?
I think typically what they say is the number of units and how many cars it can service. So you might say two pumps, which has a service of a maximum of four cars, if each pump can service two cars.
And there's different styles of dispensers, you're right. I mean, some of them, you can flip, you know, push one button, and it's all coming out of the same dispenser. Some of them have, you know, like three or four different ones, you know, diesel and this and that, and that, you know. So, I mean, you make a good point, to think through what exactly we're defining here, because a pump could be, like you said...
Well, the ordinances in this town have notoriously been ambiguous, and I just thought that might be a way to clear it up.
Yeah, great point, great point.
The next thing is, is that...
Planning to just clarify the language.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We could just ask planning to clarify the language of how many vehicles they want to be able to service per pump, and that pretty much, you know, it doesn't matter how many nozzles are on it, it's how many parking spaces there are next to it. You know, that really is functionally how many cars are on the site.
I just think it ought to be clarified, so there's no argument as to what it really means. The next thing is, is that one size does not fit all. And we see this over and over again in our daily lives. There should be language in this ordinance that allows for some ability to have some fluctuation to accommodate a situation that was not thought of in advance, so that the development could go forward without having to go through an arduous process of getting a variance. It's a challenging thing to do, but it can be done.
Do you have an example in another municipality that, where they had that built into the language? I mean, to not have to go through a variance process, you know, with that being done?
A drugstore may need more parking than a dance studio.
Sure, sure.
Dance studio may need more room to accommodate the exercises for the dance than a drugstore. But they would be required to have more parking because it's based on the square footage of the building as opposed to the purpose. So, again, it's a challenging thing to do, but it can be done if enough thought is put into it.
That's a great point, too, yeah. I agree with you, yeah.
I had a third one, but I'll save it.
Can I ask the planners another question regarding that? So I see that there's a standard parking amount for commercial, but typically there is a parking allowance for different types of businesses. So one option would be to just take that standard parking calculation out of, and didn't we talk about that at the last meeting? And then just refer to the parking calculations that will be in the general code, because that's where you would see something that's specific for each use, instead of having something general. So, I mean, that might be a way to clarify that.
Could we adopt that tonight, though? amend that tonight?
Good. We could just take it out of there if we wanted to...
Yeah, you can take it out. I think one of the things with this, with this code is, it's great that everybody is providing input, right? Like, we love that. I think the goal with this is, we're trying to create interim, like, it's almost like interim standards. We know they're going to be updated once the code is updated. It's like, what do we need in here in the short term to make sure you have a parking calculation? Because you could remove it, but then you're kind of left with nothing in the, in the short term, except for sort of interpreting what's in the code now. And so those are sort of the decision points. And y'all can, y'all can later act in your emotion to accept the code as amended. And, like, I know, I know Kara's making note of all these amendments, and I think we're comfortable with that. The more, the bigger concern is just making sure you have something in the interim when the moratorium expires.
I agree. And I also feel like, I don't know how many of the people who are speaking tonight actually attended planning and zoning meetings, or if they were just able to attend tonight. But anyway, we get the public's comment. We're going to want to go back and speak with planning and zoning and say, do you concur with that? As opposed to, we're just, you know, marking things up at the, at the foot end here, so...
I do think, though, that planning and zoning, the commission appreciates that this is, this is meant to be updated once the design review standards are updated. So I do, and they also appreciate, I think, the urgency in having it adopted, to have something in place. And so in the spirit of that, I think adopting it tonight with amendments is probably the preferred route. I think that's where we're, where we're at, from a planning department. Planning recommendation is better to have something in place than not, even if it has to be amended. And I think these amendments are good. We didn't get a lot of feedback in the planning and zoning commission, so this is a great opportunity to get them in before it's effective.
First, with regard to Regan's remark on the hotel size, personally, I think nine is funny. But as far as this map, the map is very hard to read because it's kind of small. But that commercial area that's being discussed actually includes the area over about where 59 turns north, and up that area where there are very large lots. And so it is applicable. That's the area where the old Long Branch was, I think, and that's in the current commercial. I'd like to bring up one other small point. Somewhere in there, I definitely don't remember the line, was a requirement that for every, I think it was every five, well, this part I remember, every 500 feet of frontage, you had to have either a bench, a bicycle rack, or a piece of public art. And I'm in favor of all three of those things, but 500 feet is almost two football fields. And I don't know if we'd even have anything with 500 feet. I think if we're going to have a requirement, and we should have, for bicycle, bicycles and benches and public art, which would be great, it ought to be some reasonably small amount that would fit in our town and would actually come to be applied.
Anybody else?
Consideration should be given to the language of this ordinance that, once the applicant has satisfied the requirements under the ordinance, that a permit must be issued. If you satisfy, satisfy the requirements, then you do a permit.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing done? We just, we don't... Go ahead and do number two, yeah. Okay, we'll go to number two now, discussion. This is 2025-002, an ordinance of the Board of Alderman, Town of Abida Springs, to make amendments to the official zoning map to separate the commercial, historic, and residential, historic zoning designations into the base districts and the historic overlay district, and to make amendments to the text of the Code of Ordinances of Part Nine, Planning and Zoning and Development. Talks about Chapter Two, Zoning Regulations, Section 9-222, Historic District, to clarify the district as an overlay and remove regulations that are defined in base zone, zoning districts. Any comments from the board?
As Leanne mentioned, we have received some comments and talked about this. This ordinance is related to the separation of the historic overlay from the underlying zoning of residential and commercial. And it's, as Janet also mentioned, not rezoning anything, but it's clarifying and making it easier to administer the code with these overlay regulations and then these, these base districts.
So now historic is solely an overlay on top of either residential or commercial or corridor?
Right, because previously there was this on the zoning map, which were these hyphenated, commercial historic and residential historic. And there was language that said, along these corridors, along the trace, and so on. So now all historic is treated as an overlay.
So I want to just clarify, and this is, I want to, the important part of this, both the commercial standards we just discussed and the map clarification, is that these are necessary to sort of think about the rest of the town zoning and land use. So this is really like housekeeping. And so the map that y'all are seeing in your packet shows the overlay, right? It shows the overlay where it was originally over the historic and where it was originally over the residential. The last meeting, we talked about another map that showed, in addition, the purview of the historic commission, which is larger than this map. And I have copies of it because I want to make sure y'all can see it. So anyone who is interested, the purview of the historic district commission is bigger than this. Cause there are zoning districts where it says any land use application also has to be reviewed and approved by the historic district commission. And those areas may not be in the overlay. I know that sounds very confusing. So I'm going to just give this map to the, the Aldermen because I just want y'all to see the full extent of the historic district commission's purview. And that this is going to stay the same. Their purview and it's now, it's not, it's not. If anyone from the public wants to see the, the bigger map. This wasn't a staff report. It's not, it's not.
Thank you.
That's why it's not important. And so for anyone, uh, you know, you raise your hand, I can give you a map. What Kara is saying is true. We're not changing the purview of the historic district commission. All those zoning districts that say the historic district needs reviewing, use applications in this still exist. It's just weird that you also have these overlays that don't cover those areas. So the first thing we have to do is split the overlay. And then as part of the townwide updated zoning, we can then extend that overlay to, to these areas in coordination with the town, right? So we're not just going to, you know, hurry up and expand it. First, we have to just separate it from those underlying base zoning districts. So it's, it is kind of like, we're trying to just do apples and apples and have all these zoning districts make sense before we have conversations about whether the overlay should be extended to other areas that the historic district commission has purview over. It's a lot. Thank you so much for your attention. Any questions?
No, I think this one's actually easier. The map is actually easier than the, the language. But again, it's just a cleanup so that they can move forward with the overall rezoning and mapping project. Because the language of our ordinance did not match our zoning map. And so we had to do the cleanup in order to be able to move forward with it. Is that a simplistic way to put it?
It totally is. And I think one thing to keep in mind is we are really cognizant of the limited funds available within the town. And so the reason why we weren't having community meetings and going sort of with a survey and adding more language and feedback on the commercial district standards was because we know the historic commission is rolling up their sleeves and they're pouring over it. And that we know we're going to update it. So it, it just wouldn't be efficient to spend a ton of time when we know they're working on it. We're going to bring it back to y'all as part of the larger code update. So again, um, we love hearing all the feedback and I think it's a great next step. It's definitely not the last step in thinking about commercial district standards in town.
This is sort of a procedural type comment. And a reference has been made to the planning and zoning working on, on this and that and that they sent it to us, uh, or possibly historic the same way. Now, planning and zoning and historic also are subject to the open, uh, open meeting rules. And that means that if they're doing any debate and discussion and questioning, they're doing it at the meetings. But I was at the last meeting and that's not what goes on. That the staff presents something or other, like these ordinances. They might ask a question or two and then they, they, if I'm there, they get some comments. And, uh, then they say, okay, well, we'll just pass this to the town council. They're the ones who get to decide if they want to make changes, they can make changes. So please, when you're considering making changes, don't point back to them. I mean, they, they've, that's not where changes are going to be made. You need to, you need to take the responsibility of, of correcting and making the best ordinance that you can pass. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Anybody in the audience? Okay. Do I need to close the public hearing or? Okay, I need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Have a first?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, uh, closed. Okay, mayor's announcements. Last meeting, I think I said that we lost, uh, Elsie Steyer, who worked for the town for a while, born and raised in Abida. This is a proclamation, uh, for him. Will deliver it to his wife, Ms. Mary. You know, are we having fun yet? That used to be, that used to be Elsie's, uh, favorite thing to say. But, uh, he's definitely sorely missed and, and, um, I don't know what else to say about him. He's, he was a great guy. So. We'll put that there. Okay.
Can I comment on one other thing, Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, we, we just loved Elsie. He was really good and he was good at his job, too. People don't understand, he, he was a world traveler. He worked down in Africa and all over the place for oil companies and whatnot. He was a, a pretty rounded guy and, uh, we really liked him. There was also another person in town that nobody noticed that passed was Margaret Lemons. Margaret Lemons was once the first lady of town. And so I think people, I don't know if anybody knows that she passed, but I think we should probably think about her as well. Thank you.
That's, that's good. Thanks, CJ. Okay, uh, let's see, number two, DHHM, Ms., um, Ms. Michelle Cunningham is here from, um, I'm not going to know all those names, but I know DHHM all represent people. So why don't you introduce yourself and then, um.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Cunningham and I'm a partner with the firm of Du Planchet, Wrightman, Hogan and Mayer. It is a mouthful.
See, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been able to say that.
CPA firm in New Orleans. You guys hired us to assist the town in, uh, some of the monthly financial statements, monthly oversight of those financial statements in addition to, uh, looking back at 2024 and seeing what needed to be done to get the financial statements in order. Just a little bit about myself, I've been with the company for over 40 years in public accounting, in, uh, areas of audit, of business consulting, mainly with nonprofits and governmental entities. So I'm very familiar with entities such as yourself. And, um, we under, met with the town and went over the financial statements and where they stood for 2024. It was a huge undertaking that got, um, done within a short period of time. In looking at the financial statements and the accounting system that's presently used, there was a lot of information that needed to be, um, adjusted so that it was in conformity with the accounting standards. There was also a lot of cleanup that needed to be done in, with the financial statements from prior year's information that never got cleaned up. So kind of went in there, rolled up our sleeves and then did a lot of adjustments. Reconciled information from the financial statements to supporting documentation from your bonds, your fixed assets, your cash equity, your due to, due from accounts, the transfers. So got in there and was able to clean all that up. Because what's confusing with the accounting system that you guys presently have is QuickBooks, which is a very common accounting system. But the way in which you guys operate is by funds. So it's like there's eight little corporations. Think of it from that perspective. And each little corporation is, has to have its own set of books. And the books were kept as one corporation. And so what was happening a lot is if money was moved from one cash account to the next, but the two cash accounts were in different funds, it affected the balance of those, those little corporations. So all of that had to be looked at, reviewed and balanced out. So what you guys have, um, I think was given to you or the financial statements by fund. And as I mentioned, there are eight funds. You know, you've got your general fund, the utility fund, the lighting fund, your shared sales tax, the, the, the cemetery fund. So there's a bunch of funds. And so what's in here, I think you guys have in front of y'all. If you want, I could kind of go over these financial statements with you briefly. And then also any of the, um, I think it was also provided to you is you guys had a budget that you passed. And so the budget to actual, using the actual financial statements that were, uh, cleaned up per se was included in those budget to actual numbers. So just to kind of go over like your general fund, general fund is where the, most of the operations of the end, of the town are recorded. You know, at the end of the day, at the end of December of 2024, your balance sheet, which is as if you took a snapshot in time and said, okay, as of December 31st, 2024, what were my assets? You guys had 1.4 million of assets in the general fund. Keep in mind.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry to stop you. I just wanted to know, has the public had an, um, an option to see this anywhere? Okay, I just wanted to know if, um, if they had that. So it's, it's posted on the website? In the package that was posted tonight? Okay. I just wanted to make sure if they wanted to follow along, that somebody could pull it up on their phone as you're speaking.
I believe it was, I think I sent, I sent it to Heather and Kristen to include.
When was it posted?
It's not in.
I sent it to them when I sent it to you guys, two, two weeks ago, I think.
Last Thursday.
That's fine. I only asked because it wasn't in my packet up here tonight, so I just didn't know what the public had access to. Was this the same format?
Sandra, are we using the same format of what we sent versus what you have now?
You're looking at budget amendment.
Oh, okay, so what?
Okay, that's, that's totally separate from what we sent.
Yeah, and the packet is the ordinance. That is not the financials, which is what was sent to us. That's why I was seeing if the public had any access to the financial report.
It's, it's 26 pages long, Sandra. It's 26 pages long.
Is there a way I send it to you, Leanne, that you could pull it up? I don't know. I sent it to them. You can't access email on there.
Michelle, while they're doing that, do you mind if I ask you a few questions?
Sure.
First of all, God bless you for taking on this task. I'm well aware of the fact that the data composed is from data you were given.
Yes.
You, you received all this data?
Yes.
Okay, and that was sent to you by whom from the town?
I didn't directly work on it. I had a staff person, so I, she has access to the QuickBooks files. So I'm assuming, who gave? She actually logged into the QuickBooks account.
All right, that was my next question. The data that we received, was it an Excel, general ledger or obviously you guys had?
Yes.
Access to the QuickBooks?
We had access to the QuickBooks files, yes.
Was there any supporting documentation sent to confirm those figures?
We, we did not audit the financial statements.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine.
Some of the information we did get, however, is we did get your bond indentures. So we were able to reconcile to make sure that whatever the bond payables amount were reported in the financial statements did agree to those bond indentures. The interest did agree. We also received from, um, your prior auditors and then also reached out to the auditors before, before that, getting more detailed information about your fixed assets. Because there were, um, construction and project, construction in process projects that were sitting on the books for probably five years. And those projects were well completed. So that's something else that we did is we looked into the fixed assets to make sure that, you know, what was reported and that depreciation was recorded correctly.
Am I correct in saying that the data your office received was not referenced against any of our quotas? You're not dealing anything with, all, all you focused on was revenues and expenses, correct? Not percentages of quotas?
That is correct.
Okay. Moving forward, when presenting this board, um, with monthly financials or cash flows, are you going to be able to provide percentages to, uh, percentages, percentage of expense to budget?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Moving forward.
Okay.
When you guys are presenting to this board. Are you going to present the, either the financials or the cash flows? Once we have a 2025 budget in a format that shows expenses or percent of expense to the budget year to date?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So what, um, what I'm hoping to be able to present to you guys is kind of the budget to actual that was sent to you, I think, last night, where it shows this is your revenue, this is your budget, this is your expenditures, this is your variance, and this is the, the percentage of budget that you've spent so far. With a reference of how much should you have spent if everything's spent on an even, um, on an even basis? But everybody knows nothing gets spent on an even basis. So if your budget to actuals are out, where say in January, you've already spent 100% of the budget, there may be a reason why. Well, that's because all the expenses are paid upfront.
You pay the insurance for the year.
Exactly, exactly. So there will be some explanations for that, but on it, for those expenditures that are on an even basis, you should be able to say, okay, yeah, 50% of the budget is finished and it'll have that calculation.
All right, are you guys going to be involved in creating the 2025 budget with the town?
We can assist on that.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
And they did, the document that you got, the budget to actual that you received, they did review that and make some, um, and make some suggestions about changes and amendments to it before it was sent out. So they did review that. And the actual audit of the numbers is going to happen early May. We're on the schedule with Griffin and Furman.
Are we going to be able to submit you questions to you about, um, about the finances? About how things are structured and that type of thing?
I mean, you can, um, you know, we, we do work on a contract and then outside of that, it is an hourly basis.
Right. I mean.
Yeah.
The council's supposed to be in charge of the money, so we need to be able to talk to the money people.
Absolutely.
I have a, I have a couple of questions for you. I'll give them to you after the meeting.
Okay, okay, no problem.
It's kind of.
And I guess one, they're.
They're not really important, they're just structural things.
Right. And that's one of the other things that we had also, you know, went over with, with, um, you know, management is the structure of the, of the, the chart of accounts and whether they, and to make sure that the cash is in the right funds. Because that was some of the other issues is that there was cash being held and reported in one, you know, on the general fund, but it really was another fund's cash account. And so we made sure that the cash is in the right funds, the, um, and the, the expenses are in the right funds, too. Because sometimes you would see where the debt service expense was paid out of a debt service fund, but it really was a utility bond. So those expenses on that bond should have been reported in the utility fund. So we just made sure that all the expenses that should have been in the funds were in the correct funds and the revenues the same way. So that's why you'll see on your, the budget, and, and this may help you with budgeting purposes. You know, for ad valorem taxes, you, you guys budgeted 100% of the ad valorem to go to the general fund. And so when you see those budget to actuals, you're like, wait, we're, we didn't collect what we budgeted. But in actuality, you did because some of your ad valorem is dedicated for other purposes. And so those, those other funds are recording the revenue for the ad valorem. That's where the budget should go. So I think maybe some of those would help tweak your budget better so that you're not going to see these variances.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that there's a consistent format, uh, month after month after month, moving forward.
Definitely. You know, so just to kind of go, excuse me, with you guys, you know, was, I guess they're looking for that. You know, for the general fund, as I mentioned, this is really the operations of the town. The, the assets that you guys had as of December. The assets that you guys had as of December 31st, 2024, were 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million dollars. You had $234,000 in cash, just under $800,000 in investments. You had some receivables of some property tax, sales tax, and other miscellaneous receivables that kind of rounds it out to that 1.4 billion dollars. So most of the assets in the general fund are liquid. You also had some liabilities. You had about $192,000 of liabilities. Most of them were in accounts payable. You had about $117,000 of accounts payable. That was something else that got booked. We made sure that whatever was recorded in accounts payable, there was a detailed schedule that supports that. And also, I think there was some old accounts payable that needed to be written off, that had been sitting there for years. So those got written off too. So that accounts payable number got cleaned up a little bit. So your fund balance, so your net asset number, which is your assets minus your liabilities, was 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars. So the revenues, you guys get revenue from many sources in the general fund. You receive from ad valorem, you receive from sales tax, franchise tax, licenses, fines, you know, some miscellaneous town rental income, some event type items. So all told, you had income of 2.1 million. The majority of your income does come from sales tax. You had, of the 2.1, 623,000 comes from sales tax. The other major revenue is on planning and zoning and licenses. You had 72,000 there, and your ad valorem is 205,000. That's kind of your major, oh, you did have grants income. You had a nice chunk of change from grant income of 750,000 dollars.
Michelle, most municipalities in Louisiana put grants in a special fund versus a general fund. Which all's position?
It depends on the grant. You know, if it's just for specific capital, you know, you could run it through your general fund. If it's for a project that you have a special revenue fund set up for, like a public work type project, then it could go into your public works fund. Your expenses, you guys had total expenditures of 2.1 million. You know, y'all's expenses are broken up by the marshal, your clerk of court, and then your just general fund salaries. Your total clerk of court, I think, had around, let's see, 27,000 for your clerk of court, total clerk of court expenditures, your marsh-
Michelle, let me see if I can find out where you are.
I'm on the third, one, two, three, fourth page of the general fund.
Oh, general, okay.
Your biggest expenditure, which is what you expect to see in the general fund, is just general expenditures. That was 2.1, no, let's see, 1.3 million. So you're jet, which is on the last page of that. So the 2.1 million, 1.3, is general fund operations. And your general fund operations includes things as just general fund salaries, your insurance, utilities, legal, accounting, just advertising, travel. All of that is included in your general government. So that makes up the majority of that 2.1 million. You also, as I mentioned, you also have your marshal and your clerk of court that kind of rounds it out. So at the end of the day, you had a deficiency, so your expenditures were greater than your revenues by $35,000. You also move monies from the general fund to fund other funds. So if a fund doesn't have their own source of revenue, but you keep it separate, then, and it may need to have more funds moved from the general fund to those, to those other funds. For example, say lighting. If lighting's ad valorem doesn't cover the expenses, something has, somebody has to. So you'll typically see monies going from the general fund to those other funds. And those you'll see as your transfers in and out. You also had, just as a side note, in the general fund, you had capital outlay, and that was around $559,000 of capital outlay in the general fund. So any questions on the general fund before we go to the utility fund?
Yeah, that capital outlay of the 400, capital outlays defined as greater than 5,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The general fund for the marshal was 67?
66, 77.
66, 77.
Yes.
Why was that in general fund versus law enforcement? Why not?
So it's, the marshal is in the general fund.
Okay, so you're just doing the general fund. And then the capital outlay of the 552, do you have that broken, do you have that broken down by any chance?
I do, I'd have to get it to you. I don't have it with me.
It is, it is in the budget to actual that I sent you. That's actually, the 552 is actually the purchase of the conservancy project. It's not showing up, if you look under the Louisiana Outdoor Forever expenses, you see that it says like $35,000. That's because the house and land are actual capital purchases, not grant expenses. So going forward, when we budget, we'll be budgeting any grants that purchase items. We have to consider those capital purchases in the capital budget portion of the general fund's budget, because they are booked differently than an expense, a regular expense.
And then you also have to include the matching funds in the general fund as well?
Yeah, those are, those will show up. But when you see your budget to actual, you'll see that it's broken out in the different areas. The other portion of that 500,000, there's a, you'll see when you look at this document that there was a, other donations of $40,000.
I saw that, I don't know what that-
And then when you look at the capital outlay, there's a $40,000 in there. That was the donation of that piece of property, the value of that piece of property that was donated by the Kellys. And it had to be booked. And so it was booked by them as an income and an expense. So they zero out when it comes to the final numbers, but that's what's showing up in there.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know what that 40,000 was. Michelle?
Yes, anything donated is recorded on your books at fair market value, the data donation.
General fund, credit card Venmo processing fees, $19,000?
I know. Part of that is the fees monthly that were charged by TylerTech for the electronic payments. The majority of that is the-
TylerTech went into effect in December, correct?
TylerTech went into effect in December. So that was all years long. We, when this budget was made was before December, and so we did not actually have our first billing and start getting charged fees until after the first of the year. So when we, there's a monthly fee that's charged for the processing of the credit cards and the electronic payments. It's not just credit cards, it's electronic payments that people make through the online payment portal. And so that's what those fees are. And those actually will be broken out going forward in any that are related to the utility fund payments. They will be in the utility fund as an expense.
Okay. But the 18,998, that's, what percent of, what dollar amount? Is it just a flat fee? Or is it a percentage?
It's a, it's a percentage. I think there may be like a flat fee and a percentage of each payment. And so when you look at the amount of money that we collect in accounts receivables for the utility fund, it's a relatively small amount compared to that number.
Yeah, we're right in about 2 millions. That's, if it's 5% of 400,000, that would be about right, 19 grand. Okay. Is it that high though, 5%?
I don't have that exact number, but I can certainly get you the information from the agreement.
That's good, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the general fund? Okay. So your utility fund, also keep in mind, unfortunately, you know, the accounting standards doesn't treat each type of activity the same. So for example, your general fund records your activity on what's called a modified basis of accounting. So your bonds that are in the general obligations of the town are not recorded in the general fund. Your utility fund is considered an enterprise fund or an entity that generates fees. So you record activity on the accrual basis. So this, you will see your fixed assets included in here, you'll see your bonds payable included on the utility fund. So it just has a little bit more information that's reported on your financial statements. So for your utility fund, your total assets and deferred outflows were almost $11 million. The bulk of that is going to be in two areas. It's going to be in your restricted investments, which were 3.3 million, and also your, your assets, which were 6.9, almost $7 million. That includes your property, plant, and equipment, your construction in progress, the software. The software that you guys purchased is a fixed asset item. So that was something else we kind of had to correct from last, from the last year's And then on your liability side, your total liability is a 7.5 million. You do have to, you know, you true, your liabilities that you guys are going to, you're going to be paying in the next, you know, I'd say, few years, is going to include everything. That net pension liability, that's an actuarial number that's required to be put on the financial statements. So that is something that's a little bit different. You have your deferred revenue from the ARA monies, that was around 847,000. So that's money that you guys have received but haven't spent yet. You also have your, up at the top, the customer deposits, that's a liability to you guys, some payroll liabilities, and then your bonds payable. Your bonds payable were 5.6 million. So your net position, which is your total assets minus your liabilities, were 3.5 million for the utility fund. On your revenue side, you did have 2.8, almost 2.9 million dollars in revenue. Your, the largest revenue is in your gas. You had 642,000 in gas. Also sewer, 612,000 in sewer. Then your water was 397, and your garbage was 421, your sewer. You sewer, you had a sewer grant income, 652. This is other revenues. You had 820,000 of other revenues. 652 was from a grant income with interest income of 139,000. Your total operating expenses were 2 million. So your expenses, your general operating expenses for the utility fund were 214,000. Your gas, your operating expenses for gas were 482. So if you look at your revenues for gas, you had revenues of 642, with expenses of 482. Your garbage, your expenses were 383, with revenues of 421. So for every category, your revenue is a little higher than your expenditures. However, you do have depreciation, which is a non-cash item, but it is something that is recorded in these financial statements. And your depreciation was 257,000.
So if you take the four numbers, the 482 to 383, 218, 395, you're at 1,478. Then you have the 214, 365 expenses. Are you subtracting out the 257 from that as well? The depreciation?
The depreciation is recorded on a separate line item.
But there is no cash transaction?
No.
It's just a number, okay.
It is a number.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
So we had about 540, well, minus the 214, so 300,000, okay.
Yeah, see, your total income or loss before transfers were 888,000. That's on the last page. So you have total expenses of 2 million. Your income or loss before transfers were 88,000. You had a net transfer in of 46,000. So your change in net position or your net income was 935,000. It is, we do have that, it's just not in these financial statements. So going forward, that may not be a bad idea to kind of break it up by type of entity, and then you can really get the picture of the income or loss by type of service. Any questions on utility fund?
I do have one question. I think that you said this, but I just want the public to hear it again. So we've separated bank accounts, right? So the utility fund is no longer part of the general fund bank account.
That is correct.
So one thing that is very much moving us in the right direction is that we're starting with real numbers in a bank account. We're reporting the costs that we're proposing and what we're spending in each, and then we're ending up with a real, actual bank account number that correlates specifically to each fund, which is like a new day for Abida. So I just want to make sure that that's kind of the major change that has happened, is that right?
That, yes, and that was huge, because what was happening there is all the water and sewer revenue was going into the general fund. All the ad valorem goes into the general fund. All the sales tax goes into the general fund, and then has to be moved out. And so sometimes, you know, that movement from one cash account to the next cash account wasn't exactly done in the same amount as what the revenue was being recorded. And so it was throwing your funds out of balance again. And so got to a point where it's like, these are the numbers, and let's make sure that the water and sewer has their own cash account, and the general fund has its own cash account, and to keep that completely separate.
And so now that we have these different, separate, literal bank accounts and recorded accounts, those will be our budget line items moving forward for 2025.
Yes, yes.
And one of the things that we also did is that we had a public works and a shared sales tax. They were each funds. We combined those two funds because they both deal with sewer, water, drainage and roads. And it didn't make sense, because one was basically paying for all of the repairs and maintenance, and one was taking on all of the salaries and the, the equipment and the fuel. So we combined those, so that now there's one public works fund. They share the bank account. Shared sales tax is going to be a budget line item revenue in the public works fund, and they'll all go through one account.
Was that 50% or 25%?
For the ad valorem, you mean?
Yeah, for the ad valorem, it goes to public works.
The ad valorem has, I think it's 50%.
So, and the other thing too, I think that was going to make it easier, is that you've got the special sales tax and the shared sales tax. So it's kind of like, okay, it's, the names were too close, you know? So it is nice to just pool it all into one. They do the same thing. Let's account for everything in one fund.
Thank you.
Kind of streamline it. So we do have, the next fund is the special sales tax, which I guess I'm calling now the public works fund. So you had 53,000 in assets, a little bit of accounts payable. So your net asset of fund balance was around 38,000. So the special sales tax does receive sales tax income. It receives 623,000 of income. That is the major income that this fund received, with expenditures of 416,000.
Michelle, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find you, where she is.
Oh, the special sales tax?
It's called, it says special sales tax at the top, because that's what the fund was always called, but it's public works.
Yeah.
Yeah, that led to a lot of confusion, because you have a shared sales tax and a special sales tax.
I don't think we have this. We didn't get this page.
Let's see, which one, what's the next one you have?
Page 25.
That's it.
Page 25? Page 25?
Oh, cemetery is the next one? Okay. Cemetery, all right. We can go over cemetery.
I'm sorry, I have the shared sales tax fund on 25. Is that one?
Looking for the special.
Special.
There's page one.
No special?
Yeah, it's page one.
Oh, the special sales tax is page one?
Yes, it is. The other thing that we did is that the chart of accounts, we have revamped the chart of accounts so that all of the, every line item now has a letter in front so that if it is related to the general fund, it will start with a G. If it's related to parks and rec, it'll start with an R. And so, going forward, we can look at a line item and see if it belongs in which fund it belongs in. And so, park, public works will actually have an S for streets.
So, on the income statement for your special sales tax, majority of that is from sales tax. So, we had 623,000 of sales tax, total expenditures of 416, with some capital outlay, a little bit of capital outlay. I don't know why that was so small.
Wait, Michelle, we're on the special sales tax, correct?
Correct.
Then, we must have the wrong page because we're at 49,000. It was the very first page of the document that was sent to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's your balance sheet. So, the first page is your balance sheet. Your receivables.
It says special sales tax fund at the top.
Correct. So, that first page is your balance sheet.
Okay.
Sorry, I just jumped over your balance sheet.
So, you got two different financial reports, a balance sheet and a statement of revenues and expenditures for each fund.
Correct. So, the first page is the balance sheet.
All right, I'm with you now.
So, you had 53,000 of assets, which most of that is a receivable for sales tax, and then some accounts payable of about 15,000. So, then, your net asset number, which is your assets minus your liabilities, was 38,000.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, on the statement of revenues and expenditures, you had 645,000 of revenues, of which most of that is made up of sales tax. That's 623, almost 624,000 of sales tax. So, you have expenditures of 416,000. A majority of that is going to be in your public works salaries and benefits, and then some repairs and maintenance of 103,000. So, then, your excess of revenues over expenditures of your net income was 228. There was a transfer out of 876,000.
Where did that transfer go?
So, that transfer, I want to say, went to the general fund. A lot of what we had to do to clean up the financial statements ran through a transfer account. So, if there was things on the balance sheet, like this, the equity and pooled cash, so what would happen is, at the end of the year, your auditors would come in, and they were like, okay, well, your funds don't balance, so let's get the funds in balance. And the way they would balance your funds is they would hit this equity and pooled cash. Well, they may not have a value, they may not have any equity in the pooled cash in the general fund. But that's how they made it balance, instead of kind of getting to the root of the issue. And so, there was no equity in pooled cash for this fund, so that's why we ended up just cleaning up a lot of those accounts, and that went through the transfers in or out. You should not see any of that coming, going forward.
Okay, so, coming forward, the amount that comes in is going to be more likely to match the amount that we're.
Yes, yes.
Not going to have an 800,000 transfer from the general fund under regular basis?
I do not foresee that at all.
And going forward, any transfers in and out that you see in that way will be budgeted transfers that will happen because they're required or because we're budgeting, and you'll know ahead of time that they're happening.
Yeah, when that, when that sales tax comes in, all doing the contours, it's broken down in certain percentages, 50% goes here, 25% goes here, 25% goes there, so that you have to show it out eventually somewhere.
And part of the problem is, is that we were splitting these bank accounts at the end of a year when the funds and all of the bank accounts are the lowest because we've paid for all of our expenses for the year. So, when we're trying to take, this was one of the accounts that was banked out of the general fund. So, we're trying to take what's in the general fund and give public works what's owed to public works, give the utility fund what's owed to the utility fund, and give general fund what's owed to the general fund. And so, this was kind of a balancing line item. But we really, I think that with the changes that are coming with the utility fund, I don't know that there's going to be any, the only required transfers out are going to be from utility funds to sinking funds. I think are the only budgeted transfers out that you're going to see going forward.
When the shared sales tax, the sales tax comes in, it's coming into the general fund, correct?
No, we've changed everything, and so, now you're going to see that everything is going to be.
It's coming into the town hall. How's it, it's our account. It's going into three separate accounts?
No, no, no. There's going to be a balancing that happens at the time that it enters, and that's going to be balanced by the end of the day. So, there's not, the money's moved, and the balancing happens in the same day. So, we changed, the majority of money that comes in in sales tax goes in public works. So, that is the bank account that it's physically going to be deposited in.
Okay.
And then, the amounts that go to general fund, I think it's just general fund because it's Marshall, sales tax is Marshall and general fund, and then public works and shared sales tax. Public works and shared sales tax is one account, Marshall and general fund is one account. So, the money that's owed the general fund will be transferred the day that the money comes in, and those funds will be balanced. The journal entry will happen to balance those funds that day. And so, and then, we, ad valorem is the opposite. That will be deposited into the general fund because the majority of the money stays there.
Because what was happening before is the money was going into one account, and then they would transfer from one cash account to the next cash account, but they weren't balancing the funds.
Right.
And so, now, we've kind of met with them and developed processes so that they make sure that when, if it's monies that comes into one bank account, but it needs to be out, go, some of it needs to go to another bank account, that happens the same day with the transactions on both funds so that they keep both funds in balance.
And our revenues moving forward in the monthly or cash statements show the monthly amounts coming in in the sales tax, correct?
That is correct.
But it would just be broken down by departments?
Yes.
Versus one lump sum.
Yes, yes.
And in the past, like for our ad valorem, we would budget that full amount, and then we would budget at the bottom, the transfers to lighting fund, to parking rec, and all of that. You won't see that anymore. Now, general fund will be budgeted for only the portion that general fund keeps, and same thing with the other funds.
So, as you mentioned, the only transfers that you guys should see is transfers that are actually budgeted because when you do the budget, you'll budget what your revenue is anticipated, what your expenses are anticipated, and if you think that you're going to have more expenses than revenues, to be able to get a balanced budget, you are going to have to transfer monies in, but you're going to know that ahead of time. Okay. I'm not sure which one is next. Is it cemetery?
First, general.
You did utility fund, three is cemetery.
All right, I have to ask a question. Where's this mausoleum?
Oh, I don't know.
Where'd this come from?
Mausoleum's been there for a long time.
I realize that, and I read the notes. Where is it?
It's in the back right side of the old cemetery.
With this bill of $50,000.
What bill?
What was this?
Oh, no, no, no. There was, that was money that was, let me make sure what you're looking at before I say.
Mausoleum and due from the general fund.
Yeah, so, due from the general fund. What that is, is that there was a prior administration that borrowed money from the cemetery to supplement the general fund, and it's been sitting on the books. And so, we've created a plan to pay that back in this one year so that at the end of this year, the cemetery fund will have that amount of money back that it was owed, and that debt will be off of the books.
I've never seen this written in seven years.
Because it's now been recorded in the.
Where was it discovered?
It is older than seven years.
Well, yeah, obviously, previous administration.
It's a hanging Chad. Okay, next.
So, the cemetery fund has its own cash account. The largest asset it does have is a lamp account of 233,000. So, the total assets for the cemetery fund were 319,000. You had a little bit of accounts payable, which was 5,000. So, your net asset number, which is your assets minus your liabilities, was 314,000. For the cemetery, the income that it does receive is plot sales. So, you guys received 18,000 in plot sales with some interest income. So, your total revenues were 29,000. Your expenditures were 13,000 with some, that's just your salaries and benefits, with some repairs and maintenance, so that your total expenditures were 37,000. So, you did have a deficiency where your revenues were less than your expenditures by 7,000. They also had some cleanup with that 11,000 transfer that was included in there.
I do have a question about that. I don't know if it's really a question for you, per se, but if this is a, if the cemetery is something that is losing money, and the way we make money in this is to sell plots, which is a finite amount of money that we could ever get out of it, does it make sense to pay a salary, which is an ongoing item, out of that fund?
That just went, that didn't go into effect until 2023.
Traditionally, we have not done that in the past.
It's a reality that there is someone who has to administrate the cemetery. So, when plots are sold, there's paperwork that has to happen. There's also recordings that have to happen. So, the reality is, is that we have payroll that has to be spent on the cemetery. And so, it was changed so that a portion of the salary of the person who administrates cemetery, because we don't have one person who handles only cemetery, this is a portion of the salary of somebody who handles 5 million other things. And so, we actually reduced that some, but the cemetery, when you are having to administrate the cemetery, it requires a good bit of time.
Okay, but where is it?
I understand that. I just feel like it's something that we're just poking a hole in the bottom of the bucket that we know is going to disappear. So, I feel like a salary that traditionally in the past has been paid for by a different department is now being placed on something that is already dwindling fund. It doesn't make a lot of long-term sense. We're just racing to the end of the budget.
The idea being that we're recording expenses where they exist. And so, the alternative is, is that we underestimate what it costs us to run the cemetery, and then ultimately, we end up with not being able to fund the cemetery. And so, I think that we could certainly stop recording that, and it makes no difference to us because it's not, and there's nobody to fire. That money is being spent one way or another, and you could certainly move that and record it in any one of the other funds that this person also administrates, but you're underestimating what the cemetery costs us to run. And we have to have that information because if you don't, at some point, it runs out. If you ever get to the point where you can't sell plots anymore, then you no longer have a salary to administrate because we don't bury people. But when you have to sell a plot, there's an enormous amount of paperwork that has to happen because they get a deed, and you have to meet with people who are grieving, and it could be an hour or more that you have to spend because you want to be sensitive to these people, meeting out there to go and meet with them, to show them places.
I know, we have a huge agenda tonight, so I don't want to get into the, how the whole operation of the cemetery. I'm just saying, from a dollars and cents standpoint, I think we need to just look at that, if it makes sense, the way that we're budgeting for it. It's just a general comment for, and the reason I posed it to our CPA is, do you normally see reoccurring fees in something that is a dwindling fund like that, or would you recommend a different?
So, no, I probably would be, I would recommend doing it this way. If you notice that your largest expense on here was repairs and maintenance. So, I don't know if that was something that was significant this year that had to be done, that you don't normally see this much in repairs and maintenance to the cemetery. You know, so if that's not the case, then your salaries and benefits are funded by the plot sales and the interest income. And so, then, you're okay at that point. So, because it does, if you do have somebody that actually has to oversee it, then that's where they're spending their time. So, it does make sense to put it on this fund. I do understand where you're coming from is that eventually, you're not going to have plot sales, so then.
We're not going to have another $50,000 next year either to add to that.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's almost.
It's always been an administrative function, up until a year ago, two years ago.
Gotcha. Anyway, we don't have to solve that. I was just asking the question while you were here, if that is normal for this type of fund.
I think the last, I don't know which fund y'all have next.
Debt service.
Oh, debt service, okay. So, the debt service fund, this is a fund that holds the assets to pay the debt, and only the debt that is for the general obligations of the TAM, not the debt that's reported on the utility fund. And I want to say there's only one debt of one bond that you guys have that is the general obligations that are not considered utility fund debt. And so, this fund, this debt service fund is the fund in which pays the principal and the interest on that debt. You have total assets of 312,000, of which all of it is cash. You do have some property taxes receivable that is included here because the debt is funded by dedicated ad valorem taxes. So, you have a little bit of receivables, you have your cash, and then some deferred ad valorem, some monies that, you know, hadn't been recognized as revenue. So, your fund balance, which is your net assets minus your liabilities, is 300,000. On the income statement side, is where you see the monies that are coming in to fund the payment of that debt. That's your ad valorem taxes and some interest income. So, your total revenues were 136,000. Your principal payment on that debt, 40,000. Your interest, 6,500, and some, just some minor professional fees. I think that's just debt servicing the debt, is 46,000. So, you did have your revenues over your expenditures of 89,000.
And again, the net transfer out of 253,000 is going.
That was trying to clean up this fund because what ran through this fund was some expenditures that were really expenses and principal payments that were for the utility fund. It had a pooled equity that really didn't have a pooled equity, so that was kind of cleaning all that up too.
And those went to the general fund?
Not all of them went to the general fund. There is a detailed schedule that I can provide to you guys of where those monies went.
And these weren't actually money that we moved.
That is correct.
We didn't actually move funds, money from one account to another. That's not what these are. These are transactions, those net transfers in and out are transactions to balance those accounts over a 30-year period.
What's the next one you got to have?
What's your next one, Lee?
Governmental?
No.
Debt service, debt service.
We did debt service.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay. Yeah, that was the $46 that was just sitting in this fund. We just got rid of that.
I was just cleaning up something that was on the book.
Next was lighting.
Lighting. Oh, it is lighting, huh? Yeah, here is lighting. Since you're lighting fund, the lighting fund is a fund set up because it has dedicated ad valorem taxes specifically for lighting. So, it has its own cash account. So, you've got the cash account on your balance sheet with some receivables for ad valorem. So, your total assets were on 81,000, little bit of liabilities. So, your fund balance, which is your net assets minus your liabilities, was 80,000. And as you can see on the income statement side, the dedicated monies of ad valorem that you guys received were 26,000. the dedicated monies of ad valorem that you guys received were 26,000, some interest income. This franchise fee, though, it's, that really should be a transfer in from the general fund. I think that's, that's-
It was just a one-time thing.
Yeah. So I think that does need to get reclassified out because your true revenues are really just ad valorem and interest.
Historically, the past 10 years, we've never, I think, exceeded 7,000. Why was it 14,000 this year? It was a high transfer in, and it was done like in July.
Because we transferred the first quarter CLECO franchise check into there. So we put the totality of the first quarter CLECO franchise check.
Okay.
In the past, it was just a portion of it, but we had decided that we would put the whole first quarter CLECO, whatever that may be, would go into there for that so that we could create a cushion going forward so that we don't have to do those transfers every year.
What percentage of that franchise goes to lighting? You said you gave the whole first quarter.
The first quarter, yeah. So then every other check went to the regular general fund. So when you look in the general fund's income on that one, it is the actual amount that general fund kept. So if you add this number to the franchise fee that was on the general fund, that is the total franchise fees that were collected for the year. And that's why you'll see, when you see that budget to actual, the general fund was short about this much for the revenues on franchise fees. And I have an explanation in the line item that you'll see on the budget to actual of why that is.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that needs to be corrected. So the franchise fee does need to be recorded on the general fund, which is a transfer. So the expenditures on the lighting fund were 31,000. So the total revenues minus expenditures, you kind of, you had around $9,500 revenues over expenditures. Recreation.
Recreation.
Yes. So your recreation fund, your total assets for recreation were 175, almost 176,000. Most of it is in cash. You did have 76,000 of monies in your lamp account and some receivables for ad valorem. The recreation fund also does have dedicated ad valorem for the recreation fund. You had some liabilities of around 4,700. So your net asset number of your assets minus your liabilities was 171,000. On the income statement, your total revenues were 148,000. Your total expenditures were 206. So you did have more expenditures than you did have in revenues of around 58,000. You know, so, you know, being able to categorize it this way kind of gives you some idea of, you know, whether a particular type of activities, the revenue is meeting those expenditures. You know, because you can see with your, the farmer's market income, you received 44,000 of farmer's market income. But looking at the farmer's market expenditures, they were like 45,000. So you're kind of breaking even there. But it does kind of give you an understanding or the information to determine if you're collecting enough monies for those expenditures or those events.
And we have, we have made some changes for 2025 when it comes to this account. That $12,000 in market manager compensation, that is gone. That is no longer being paid. And then the, the park and rec salaries and wages, that was mostly public works employees, a portion of their salaries dedicated to that because they had to go out there every day, clean the bathrooms and collect the trash and fix things. Now we've dropped the amount because we have a part-timer who goes out there and does all of that twice a day. And the only thing that we are charging now to public works is 5% of the public works employees. And that's if they have to go out there and do actual major repairs that the part-timer can't do. So you'll see that the salaries and wages are going to drop for that in 2025.
I mean, we could discuss it more in depth. That'd be like public works going to administrative building to unplug a toilet. We're not going to charge them for that, charge public works for it, I mean administrative for it.
Well, in the past, public works was actually the ones who was doing all of the grass cutting, who was doing all of the repairs and maintenance on the playground, who was doing everything that was out there. So we've dropped it down, I think it's 5% of three of the public works employees that we're charging going forward.
I think the last one should be shared sales tax.
Yes.
So your shared sales tax, your total assets are 13,000. You have accounts receivable other, which is the majority of your assets. You do have a negative sales tax book balance in the cash.
Why is that? That doesn't make sense.
I can look into that.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense because they-
I just have the scribble on my paper. I couldn't figure it out either.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll look into that further. You have a lamp account, some li, a little bit of liabilities because this actually does get sales tax. So if you notice on the income statement side, your total revenues are 723. Your sales tax income is 416. You do have some other income of 300,000. I think that was like a great-
That was the parish money.
Yeah, the parish money, yeah. With expenditures of 80,000. And this is where your capital outlay comes out of that street overlay project. That was about 1.1 million.
I'm sorry, what was the other income above the 723? I'm sorry, the 300, oh, that's the parish 300,000, okay.
Correct, correct.
And that was received in 2024?
2025.
No, was that received in 2024? This is 2024 data.
No, because you have a receivable for it. It was due to you guys in 2024, but you didn't get it till 2025.
Okay.
But your biggest expenditure is in that capital outlay of 1.1. And that's the street overlay project.
So to understand that a little better, because I think there's been some confusion about how much was spent on the streetscape project, how much we've paid out versus how much has been spent or allocated between 2024 and 2025. So the total that is recorded in here includes a 2025, 300,000 that came from the parish as a reimbursable, but it's shown in 2024 because the work was done in 2024?
That is correct. You would do the money. Because you needed, you know, for you to get reimbursed, you had to incur the expenditure. So you incurred the expenditure, but you didn't get reimbursed for it yet. So the expenditure wasn't-
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. So I guess any other questions?
Thank you.
Now, these have not been audited.
I know.
You know, so, you know, they may have slight adjustments to it. We don't expect there are going to be major adjustments to the financial statements. But you do need to go through an audit to have them bless these.
So I know it was a heavy lift to go from what we had previously to what we have here. So thank you for that. It is much more understandable, as much as I understand accounting, but it is a lot easier to read and understand. Do you have any concerns about the current status of these funds?
In what way? I mean, I don't have any concern, I didn't audit Charles' book, so I can't tell you, you know, do they have support for all the underlying information that's reported here. There was a lot of issues that need to, had to be resolved as far as the way things got posted. I think there was a, there needs to be an understanding, which I think they've got it now, of that these are separate little companies and you can't act as one company. And I think that's where things got so jumbled up and they were hard to understand, where's the money going, where's it coming, what gets recorded, what doesn't. So I think now that they have a better understanding that these are separate funds and things need to be recorded for just, like park and rec has to be recorded just for park and rec. And the general fund and utility fund, separating out the utility fund was huge. And I think that's going to be helpful going forward.
Okay. And then in the future, as we go month to month in 2025, will you be looking at sort of sampling actual data for receipts or things like that? Or you're just working on, how, what level will you be inspecting daily transactions versus information that's just provided to you?
So we'll look at information that's provided. You guys hired us to kind of just really oversee that and just make sure that it makes sense and that things are recorded in the right places and things are reconciled. But we're not really going to be looking at underlying receipts and support.
But you will enter our budget into the system once it's approved for 2025. And when you report monthly, we'll have all percentages moving forward.
Yes. You will have very similar information that has been presented tonight with budget to actual variances and then percentage of budget so far.
Probably similar to the one that we sent out yesterday.
Yes, yes, similar to what you got yesterday.
We'll talk.
Please tell Mr. Duplins we're glad to have somebody who really understands the budget.
You will, too. I think, you know, once you get to the 2025 budget and it's presented maybe in this format, you may, it may be easier to read and understand.
It'll be much better format.
Any other questions? Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go through the, where you going? I thought he thought it was, is it over? Okay, mayor's announcements, the rest of them. Town center lighting, I don't know if y'all have ridden and seen the lights that are up. They're not on yet, but they will be. And we're looking to do some kind of like, what's that?
Just the lighting ceremony?
Yeah, April 26th. And we'll be putting out more about that, but I think they really look pretty cool. Okay, this week or the beginning of next week, they should have lights energized, excuse me. They should be energized, like Star Trek. The museum deck repair started. If you want to see what it looks like, you can go, it's on the tray side. God, there was some rot. There was, there was a lot of rot, as a matter of fact.
Did that go up the bid?
Yes, it did. We had three bids, yeah.
Three bids?
Yeah.
And we were given, what, 150 from the state?
Yes.
What was the bid?
137.5, yeah. And-
But I think you approved, you know, that the project should go forward as long as it didn't exceed the 150.
And it's going to be done in phases, too. So like she's doing the back right now because you can get in on the regular park side. And then he'll do one side and you'll be able to get in on the other and then they'll swap, so.
So the 137.5 was the lowest bid?
Yes.
But they could spend up to 150 if they change orders.
It has, it has to be related to the deck.
Right, but they make these order, change orders that you guys do. Who approves it?
We have to, yeah. Okay, so, got that. Okay, so the LMA and the LLA presentation is Tuesday, March 18th in this building, nine to one. That's going to be the training that's going to be going on. So anybody who wants to come to that, that's when that is. Nine to one, March 18th. Okay, so now law enforcement.
So very quickly, this runs from February 5th to today. There were no arrests. There were four to five assists to outside agencies. There was a summons issued for an incident that occurred at Junior's. No residence burglaries. A vehicle burglary that was reported. It wasn't like someone woke up and discovered their car had been broken into. The person had more of a timeframe of a week where something was in his vehicle and, you know, he's not sure exactly where it took place. But the best we could conclude is that it happened here. So we're not 100% sure that it happened here. No business burglaries. There was a traffic incident out in the meadows. Someone decided to drive through the mud and that didn't work out too good for them. They abandoned the vehicle and I think they broke one of the pipes sticking up out of the ground. I mean, the truck was, was up to the frame in mud. How they thought they were going to pull that out by strap into a plastic pipe, I don't know. So they, we towed the truck and they're going to have to take care of that cost of that damage, you know, once we finally get in touch with them. Traffic stops, there were 61. Out of those, there were 31 citations written. We had four accidents that I'm aware of that we handled. No school incidents, no warrants, no thefts. And there was a total of 64 things that our guys had dealt with over that time period. That's it.
Out of those 61 citations, how many of them were speeding?
I don't know. You'd have to check with Mr. General.
Okay, because I know that last year, if I have these numbers correct, the entire year, 78 speeding tickets were given in one year. And there were absolutely no speeding tickets for three months of the year. So I'm just wondering if, I hear so much about speeding. I do not understand why there were no citations issued. It may just be y'all are miss, you know, someone's not out there when people are speeding. But it seems to me that 78 speeding tickets for an entire year is not very much.
I'm not, I'm not sure what time period you were talking about, but-
The whole year.
It was just recently that we had two new guys come on. And prior to that, it was just me. I want to say 2002 is when I broke my leg and dislocated my foot. So I was out for a little while there.
2000-
22.
Oh, okay, I'm talking about 2024.
Okay.
Only 2024.
So last year?
Yes, just last year.
So those guys just came on in July of last year?
Correct. I understand that. I know the dates they came. I'm just curious in saying, we only had 78 and people say they're speeding all the time. And there were no speeding tickets given in three months. I'm just commenting. I'm not saying anything's wrong with that. I'd like to keep up, but I would love to know the speeding, number of speeding tickets each month. Sissy Wigan, Abita Springs.
I agree with what Mrs. Sissy's saying. If you don't mind, can we just have that statistic?
Sure, sure.
Moving forward. Speeding citations.
I don't know if you want to present those or give them to me. Either way, it doesn't matter.
I think that they've been being, I've been giving them to the mayor and I think he's been sending them to the alderman who's in charge of law enforcement. So I think that alderman town plate probably has that. I think it was sent to Alderman Contoy's last year.
Speeding tickets, just 10 citations?
I think it was sent sep, oh, it's not broken down by speeding?
It's not broken down by speeding.
Okay, yeah, I can make sure that those get-
Yeah, if you write 100 citations a month and none of them are for speeding, that's not directing our problem.
What are citations besides speeding? Is that like running a stop sign or?
Yes, ma'am. We get a lot of complaints about the stop sign at Level and Laurel. It's a consistent problem back off North Street with people trying to get around the school traffic in the morning type of deal. I'm sorry?
I've seen that-
I've seen that Deputy Brown tends to write a lot of citations for texting and driving.
Especially in a school zone, yeah.
And someone called earlier today, actually, wanting us to do some enforcement over by the pub. Because during a school zone, it's a right turn only. And I don't know if a lot of people don't realize, the reason for that is if somebody sits there waiting to make a left turn, all these other folks have already been waiting in line for four or five minutes and most of them are not going to let you in. So this backs up all the way to the school, then the school traffic can't get in and then it gridlocks that whole area. So I know for some folks that want to go to the left, it's, it's an inconvenience. But in the, in the much bigger picture, we absolutely need that to happen to keep the traffic flowing, to get the kids to school safe and in a timely manner.
Seatbelt violation is a citation. Seatbelt is a citation.
People have a ton of difficulty sorting that right, that's a stop circle coming out of the school. Before you turn left, it's getting very confusing to make a right turn.
Right, right.
Because people have been asking, I was, I was wondering if you could take a moment to explain the separation of responsibilities in enforcing traffic stuff between you and the sheriff? Because there were two, two big traffic stops which had major criminal implications. And people are asking, hey, why wasn't it the marshal?
So we don't know what led up to those traffic stops. That may have been a tip that was called in. I don't, unfortunately, I don't know the details of that. Or it may have just been a random traffic stop. But I mean, you know, if we're work, any, they, we both have jurisdiction here in Abida to do traffic enforcement or any type of criminal enforcement. And so it may have just been the luck of the draw that they came across that or, you know, like I said, it's possible that there may have been something that led up to that.
I can also tell you that I've had a conversation with, again, Deputy Marshal Brown and he is establishing a very good relationship with the sheriff's officers who come through Abida and who do, I think it's District Four. And so he's communicating with them on a daily basis. And I think because of that, there is a relationship that's happening that's causing them to maybe make traffic stops where they haven't been particularly as attentive to do before. Because I think there's been at least three that have resulted in major stops like that in recent weeks. And I know that we just recently had a conversation about his, his interactions with the sheriff's office and how helpful they've been to him and him to them.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't it be prudent for us to know what the sheriff's office has done or accomplished when you give your report? Because if I would have walked out of here tonight, I would have thought the town was the safest town in this, in this area and we're doing fantastic. You guys are doing a great job. If I wouldn't have heard what happened literally 100 yards from my property, I wouldn't know it unless you would bring up, what is St. Tammany accomplishing as well as you guys? You can't do it by yourself, I get that. But I think we should hear a report of what they've done.
So over time, I've, I've tried to establish that, that link of communication with those guys. And the only way they've provided that information so far is for me to do a public records request every time. I think there are easier ways we could accomplish that, but we just haven't gotten to that point yet. But yes, that is a good point, you know.
I don't mean to slight it.
No, it is...
It's all right, I remember who you are. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I mean, look, if there's, if there's some sort of crime trend that's going on and I'm unaware of, that's a problem. You know, so, so again, very good point.
Those two incidents were on the news or in the paper. Both of those incidents were in the paper on the news.
There was one stop at 59 and Pearl Street or in that area and there was a stolen firearm found in the vehicle. And I believe the other stop was out by the post office, by 435. And they subsequently found a substantial amount of fentanyl and some cocaine. So, and you know, our, talking amongst ourselves, we've already, I've made it clear to our guys, you know, I said, look, just because it's a small town of Abida, don't think there's not big time criminals passing through here. So you can't let your guard down. You gotta stay on your A game.
We got major highways going all over here.
We got a major interstate right down the road.
All righty, thank you all.
Thanks, chief. Okay, let's do roll call.
Here.
Still here.
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 Okay, any agenda modifications? Hearing none, take a motion to accept the February 4, 2025 minutes.
So move?
Number first.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Chairman updates. Alderman Boudreaux, infrastructure.
Yeah, okay. I'm really happy to announce that I'm getting regular updates on what's going on with the infrastructure from Ms. Danette Jenkins, if I can find it in all this paper. And it's been very helpful. I can communicate with her if I have any issues or anything. And that was, well, maybe I don't have it. But anyway, she's giving me regular updates on everything that's going on. And every, all the projects look like they're working ahead pretty well. The guys are still doing good. They've lost LC now, but they're, they're filling in. And so it's, it's moving along pretty good for infrastructure.
Good, all right. Alderman Contoy's?
Okay, a lot of what's going on in planning and zoning, we're talking about tonight, so I won't belabor too much of that. But in February 27th, there was a Safe Streets Plan was adopted. So if you guys have been following along with that. There is also a development clearing plan that was issued for Ashner Clinic on Highway 59 and Harrison Avenue. The commission voted favorably to forward a revocation or land swap to, to town council, which we'll be talking about tonight. There was also a discussion about potential new zones presented. That was all at the planning meeting. Upcoming, we have a couple of different public hearings that are coming up for, and you can look on their website to see those. And also the proposed draft for zoning classifications. And there's a review of a proposed residential draft zoning that will be available coming up soon. And really, the important thing is that we are voting on the ordinance and map changes so that we can kind of have something in place when the moratorium expires. And then we'll be also talking about some sort of land swaps that's also on tonight's agenda. So those are the main issues. And I just wanted to let people know again that there's a community meeting. It's an open house meeting to discuss potential discussion and presentation for zoning. And it will be April 2nd from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And Alex, you guys are going to be there. And it'll be more informal, you won't have to sit here. You can just walk up and ask them any question you have. Okay.
Okay, great. Alderman's office?
Yes, we received the year-end finances, financials and the December numbers last Thursday. But is it March the 6th? And that was what Ms. Michelle was reviewing tonight. We're going to have to take a long look at the budget for 2025. If we just look at salaries, legal expenses, and the amount spent on Level Bervant over the approved budget amounts, that's $468,000 over approved budget amounts. Just those three things. Legal, Bervant, and salaries. That's not benefits, retirement, et cetera, that's just base salaries. They'll be presenting a budget to us hopefully in the next week. So when's that coming out?
I believe that we're going to try to get it to you before the end of the week so you can review it, so we can introduce it at the 26th and then do public hearings in April.
Lot of questions that we have that we'll be asking the LLA next week. If you look at the budget versus, what'd she call it?
Actual.
It's over a million dollars, what we thought we were taking in in revenue versus what we spent. So we spent a million dollars more than we thought we were taking in. These things need to be addressed, as I mentioned at the last meeting. We have 100% more staff on board today than Louis Fitzpatrick's administration in the office and 33% more than Greg Lemmons. We've had some major projects, some of them are coming to a close. I think Louis had about 15, Greg had about 19 or 20. We're at 30 employees now for the town. We need to look hard at our numbers for 2025 and at the same time, look at possibly considering a rate increase for utilities. And maybe some reductions. But the budget will be coming out and we'll discuss that obviously publicly. And I'll make more recommendations then. I'll have more answers of questions when the LLA meets next week and we can ask them some questions, issues that we'd like to address, that I'd like to address.
Alderman Tomplay?
All right, for health and community service, cross connection control policy, we're continuing to notify customers who have not remitted their annual backflow prevention device certification and sent reminders to several commercial locations for completion of the survey to determine if their location warrants installation of the protection devices. Individual sewage treatment units. We finalized the research necessary to identify the location and types of individual sewage treatment units. We have within the town limits, I think you saw, we had some presentations about that a few months ago. We got a lot of those. The mayor was given the report showing the location of 194 homes that will need to be monitored to meet the requirements of the Louisiana sanitary code and the town's MS4, which is the small municipal separate storm sewer system permit. Well, you can see why we call it MS4. We are in the process of writing a procedure for addressing the monitoring of these locations and expect to begin notifications to customers by the end of this month. So these are definitely systems that have to be maintained in order for, for the, for these things to work. Otherwise, we're creating big environmental hazards. Our water grade, we are still waiting for the Louisiana Department of Health to issue our grades for 2025. From the sanitary survey, the Louisiana Department of Health completed a sanitary survey of the town's water system on the 19th of last month. No monitoring or reporting violations were noted. No positive bacteriological samples for the past year and no unresolved deficiencies. We do have some work that is needed on the firehouse well so that we can update the monitoring plan for that, for that system. We should have this work done within the next 30 days and a response sent to the Department of Health. This has been, there's been some mention of the need for a new secondary water source in the town. This is a concern that we're, we're seeking funding for, for a new secondary well. But at this time, the firehouse well passes the Department of Health inspection as a secondary source as long as we complete the remedial work needed on the well. But we don't want to just leave well enough alone, so to speak. The town policies, we have completed the compilation of the policies and found the town's records from previous administrations. These policies have been reviewed and updated as needed. We have also enacted several new policies that need HR administrative duties. A copy of this booklet can be requested if anyone wants to look at that. It's about 138 pages. One of the, of the things that we are in need of from the law enforcement side is a good set of policies and procedures, which we don't have a full set currently. On, when, when the marshal returned to work on 10/28, the mayor did assign that as, as his job, as the chief law enforcement officer for the town, to get those policies and procedures completed by the end of February. That timeline has not been met. We're still working on it. I asked the marshal today where he was on it and he said he's approximately 50% complete. So these are very hard things to write because you have to write them in such a way with just the right legal words so that, you know, and there's a difference between should and shall and all these kinds of different things. So they, they take a while to write and then have them reviewed and make sure that they don't, you know, come, come into conflict with one another and they're consistent throughout. This would be like a use of force policy, traffic enforcement policy, pursuit driving policy, report writing policy, evidence policy, and a juvenile, juvenile policy. So the town has completed and enacted a shift and paid time off benefits policy for the law enforcement department and is applicable to all of the members, including the marshal. This policy establishes a 14-day shift cycle with a minimum of 80 hours of attendance for a full-time member of the department. It also establishes a holiday pay policy to fit with the shift schedule. And the marshal will be the one responsible for submission of the shift schedules to the town so that we're aware of when officers and which officers should be present to respond to calls and enforce the traffic laws. And I did make note of wanting to get the speeding ticket citations specifically for next time. And Officer Brown is, has been in mandatory training classes for the last month, proposed certification. His exam is scheduled for May 1st, so please wish him luck on his exam. That's all for me.
Doing the same schedule as the sheriff's office? It is a 2-2-3, okay. So this, they have some acquaintances, they're always on the same shift with the same people, perfect. Right, I know we don't do it night, but still, they rotate.
All right. Alderman Patterson?
First, I'd like to thank Janet for all of her hard work that she's been doing on the budget and gathering and sorting through 30 years' worth of stuff to get it straightened out. And we appreciate that, we appreciate that. But I would like to make an observation. As the mayor pro tem, I've reflected on the actions of the board over the past year. And I've observed that certain members seem to be focusing almost exclusively on the unfortunate issue of theft by town employees at the expense of other equally important matters. During this time, I've heard suggestions that this intense focus may be an attempt to overcompensate, possibly a way to address feelings of responsibility. However, must we, we must remind, remain mindful not to let this narrow focus distract us from the broader issues at hand. We all share a collective responsibility to tackle the full range of challenges facing this town. Focusing too narrowly on one issue at the expense of others only hinders our overall progress. Let's leave the past behind and look ahead to a future that will benefit everyone in our community. Some of the key initiatives I'll be focusing on include reviewing the expiring franchise agreements, establishing realistic impact in infrastructure fees and capacity fees that so we can easily and... that's so we can easily and effectively maintain our utility service. Also to revisit the golf cart regulations so those currently using them can do so legally. As we continue tonight's meeting, I will also be addressing two, we will also be addressing two revocations that highlight the need for revisions of our current revocation ordinance. I believe it is time for us to come together and focus on what truly matters, serving the public and driving meaningful progress. I'm fully committed to collaborating with all of you to make this happen. We can all agree now is the time to set aside our personal agendas and work together to move this town forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going into new business, number one, discussion of the revocation in exchange of a portion of South Street between the town of Abida Springs and the Randolph/Penton families. This is, in your packet, you should have a map that shows, yeah, a lot of maps. It shows. Where's Yvette? Oh, there's Yvette. This is all the Yvette's, the Penton property. And the line in blue that you see on the board and we have here, the light blue, is what we're looking to get. That black line would then represent kind of the, well, no, I don't know that that does because that's the back of the property, but that blue line would be where that main ditch is that comes across 59 and goes out into the woods. So.
We were just gonna have this discussion tonight. This is scheduled to be presented to Planning and Zoning with a public hearing. They will be making a recommendation. We don't have their opinion relative to whether this should be an exchange and we don't have all the details related to what, the decision of each party. As you can see, there are a number of different parties that are adjacent to the town's right-ofways. So, this is just to get your feedback on how you feel about it. We've talked about it before, this is a drainage pathway that the town finds to be important. And one of the areas that we're talking about revoking is that South Street, which is 17 feet wide on one end and 12 feet wide on the other. So it's not very practical as far as opening a roadway through there. And this, you know, could potentially be beneficial for the town and the applicant.
Yeah, I just want to note for people looking on, the very colorful line that's got a bunch of different colors in the center of the screen is South Street, right?
Yes.
Is the narrow street right-ofway. And the Pentons are looking at, basically they're doing a swap or some kind of transfer so that the, excuse me, town can create basically a drainage easement along a major ditch that will help a subdivision that is to the south of the property, which is where you see the purple and blue line that's fatter. And if I understand what we're looking at here, the value, the documents that we have in here show the value of this as well as the square footage. And the value and square footage of the area that they are requesting to revoke is less than the value and square footage of the property that they are looking to transfer to the town. Is that correct?
There are additional expenses that, you know, we don't have the full scope of what those additional expenses might be when it comes to the final survey. So, that would also be something that we would hope to have prior to Planning and Zoning's recommendation before it comes back to you for an introduction.
Well, I'd say so far it looks, from, at least from this vantage point, it looks like a win-win. We desperately need the drainage and so I'd just like to say a preemptive thank you for being, to Yvette, for wanting to do this. And I think this would be very helpful for us because we definitely need drainage.
Let me, let me say something right away here. First off, I hope that the Pentons use this property to become as rich as Elon Musk, I really do. I think, personally, I think we ought to just buy that strip where we have to do the drainage. And then, because I think that swapping property and closing streets and right-ofways and that type of thing is, opens up a big old giant can of worms where everybody is gonna want to do something unique for their property and it just opens up a lot of questions about who gets to do it and who doesn't get to do it and all that. So, I'm a really proponent of leaving the grid alone and just leave the grid alone. I have the Pentons want to use that property, I mean, they probably couldn't build a house on it or something, but they want to use it for whatever, they want to use it for, you know, grazing cows or whatever. They can do that, but someday, some way, we may need that street. And so, and so those are my two reasons. We may need the street one day and it's gonna, if you do for one person, you're gonna have to do for everybody in the town. And everybody wants to get to these closed streets and make it part of their yard. So, I just have questions about that, so. So anyway, we do need the drainage. I think whatever she wants for that strip there, we should give it to her. And there we go, that's my opinion.
All right, well, I'm of a totally different opinion of that. And Yvette, I hope you guys can work this out, I certainly support it. And I think getting rid of those streets would, helping a developer come in versus having to come back before this board of the town and have to negotiate that. I think that the larger this parcel is in the end, as one parcel, the greater it is for an opportunity for a nice development. So, I support, whatever you're comfortable with and the board's comfortable with moving forward and doing a, if it's an equal trade, if it's gotta take out Garden Street or add something to it to make this happen because drainage is something obviously we definitely need.
Yeah, I just want to second that opinion that I think that, on the whole, it doesn't just solve a problem for the person who is potentially getting rid of the right-ofway, but it also solves a problem for the town and for other residents who are around there for a very dire drainage situation. And what we would be giving up is an undersized right-ofway that can't be utilized for a street because of the existing amount. So if we were ever to try to create a street there, we'd have to buy more property to make it a useful street. So, to me, it's definitely more favorable for the town and its surrounding residents for this type of solution to be met.
I'd like to say I'm for this. If a developer comes in and develops this, they'll be in, they'll, they'll have to take care of the infrastructure. They're gonna have to take care of the streets. And I think it's a win-win for us because the flooding that has been occurring in the back of the property, and I have been back there, we can't even get the equipment in there to clean it out. And this takes care of all of that, so I think it's a, it's a win-win. It'll certainly help South win, for sure, so.
Anybody else?
And the current agreement is just for South Street, correct? Yeah, so the other two streets will remain with the town. And South Street was originally the boundary for the town, that's why it's only 17 feet, because the bottom portion was not originally a town, so we only really had half of a right-ofway originally.
Wait, Janet, so what we only had was the green, the yellow, and the pink? The blue is what we didn't have?
No, that whole, that whole thing is only 17 feet, then you hit her property. So, the town limits was at 17 feet, so South Street has always been that size.
What does the green, the yellow, and the pink represent?
It's just showing the different property owners, is that what it is?
Right-ofways, okay. I got you, okay, that's full street.
Uh, no other comments? That's all we're doing, is just discussing, right? Okay, we can move on. New business number two, introduction of an instrument 2025-003, an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen in the town of Abida Springs to create a standard of procedure for the finance committee chairperson, person's ability to, to all financial records. This was put forward by Alderman Sossi, so you want to talk about it, Alderman?
Yeah. Just so the chairperson now, in the future, will have direct access to all financial records. I think it's imperative now, moving forward, after what we've experienced for the last four or five years, we now have a finance company onboard, our CPA company onboard, to help us get to where we need to be. We want utilizing QuickBooks, what, 10 years, 20 years, properly or to the full extent. We now have a firm, a new software, what's it called? Toll-Tech, Toll-Tech coming onboard. I think it's important that the chairman of the finance person who's on the budget committee knows the ins and outs of the finances and they're gonna be in real time now to the best we've ever had them. So, the access that I'm asking for as chairman and for the future chairman is to just have read-only access, that will not be able to manipulate the data. And depending on how we can set it up with the town, either via VPN or internet access, so that it can be accessed remotely, again, once again, that'll be only, read-only access. And just be able to communicate with whoever is doing the books for the town and the auditor. And that's it, I mean, I can read it word for word for you, to you. An ordinance introduced does not, cannot be adopted in the same meeting. So it'll be read in full, each of the Aldermen and the mayor have received a copy of it. Mayor, if you would transfer your copy maybe with Janet, I can post it on the website. Any questions from the Aldermen?
I'll reserve comment to the next meeting.
Okay, anyone else?
I mean, it's not really for discussion, you're just introducing it, correct?
Just introducing, but it, well, that is, when an ordinance is introduced, that is for public discussion.
Well, it sounds like a good idea, I mean, the finance chairman should have access to everything. And of course, the finance chairman could change every four years, so it would, it'd just be, whoever is in that position should really be able to access any kind of financial records. Just makes sense to me. To me, that's just Cajun logic.
I disagree. I mean, I disagree to have unfettered access. And it also says in here to be able to tell the third parties how to do everything? Uh-uh, no, absolutely not.
Where does it say that?
Let's see, whereas the chairman of the finance committee of the Board of Aldermen in the town of Abida Springs has uninhibited access to any and all third-party accounting audit firm in the tabulation of all financial records and activities.
So how's that to be manipulated?
It doesn't have to be manipulated, it's just whoever's there would have the ability to speak and try to manipulate it.
Well.
It is, it is not a legislative issue. It's a, the budget and the finances are administrative. You are legislative. Ordnances and town things, yeah, but I don't, I don't even know if this is legal. Has it been through legal? Has it? Because this, I don't think it's legal, is it legal? I know, because it hasn't been into you, so now we're gonna, we're talking about something. Oh, God, okay, well, it's introduced, there it is.
Yeah, that's my, my take is it's strictly for the introduction. Generally, you don't even have any discussion or debate about it at that moment and there's a time for a hearing.
So do we allow the, do we allow the public to say anything?
It's just to put it in the hopper, you just.
That's fine, and can I just add that if there are questions about this kind of thing, is it appropriate for us to discuss it with LLA when they're here next week?
Yes.
So, that would probably give us a good place to discuss it if people want to talk about it.
All right.
Sounds good, Stuart, I would have let you talk. No, it's not. Yeah. I need a motion, yeah.
So made.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second, all, we have a vote? No, no vote, okay. All right, here we go, number three, introduction of instrument 2025-004, an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen in the town of Abida Springs to allow a publicly-elected Alderman to add to the agenda of a public meeting and introduction of an ordinance. Again, I think this was you, also Alderman Sossi.
It is, just to support Alderman Patterson's position about moving the town forward. There's a lot of great ideas in this town, there's a lot of people with ideas to help us come together, grow. I don't, I don't think an ordinance should be shut down by, for individuals at least being introduced, two individuals or one individual, because to amend the budget, it has to be unanimous. I think by being able to introduce ordinances and as the law clearly states. As the law clearly states, any elected official can introduce an ordinance at a public meeting. This would help the mayor as well with the timeframe that would give mandate to be able to introduce an ordinance. So it's an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen in the town of Abida Springs to allow publicly-elected Aldermen to add to the agenda of a public meeting and introduction of an ordinance. Whereas any elected Alderman in the town of Abida Springs who submits to the mayor an ordinance to be added to the next publicly-scheduled meeting, so long as the ordinance is submitted within seven calendar days, including weekends and holidays, prior to the publicly-scheduled meeting. Whereas the ordinance being submitted is for an introduction to be discussed. That's what we are doing when we introduce ordinances, it's for discussion. With consideration of amending by majority vote of the Aldermen in attendance when it becomes adopted. The ordinance to be submitted within seven calendar days to include weekends and holidays in advance to the scheduled public meeting, for the town's administration, specifically the mayor, via the town of Abida Springs email. Whereas the proposed ordinance introduced by an Alderman at any board meeting within seven calendar days before the scheduled public meeting shall be in writing, contain only one subject, which will be indicated in the title except for ordinance involving the annual operating budget, the capital improvements budget, or a codification of municipal ordinances. That's straight out the law. Whereas proposed ordinance has been introduced, copies of it shall be provided to all members of the board and the mayor. The title of the proposed ordinance shall be published once in the municipality's official journal or agenda. The notice of shell indicate the time and place where the board will consider its adoption. Once again, as I mentioned earlier, no ordinance shall be adopted till a public hearing when it has been held. No ordinance can be adopted at the meeting at which it is introduced. It's all for discussion. I think it's a very simple way and we don't have to get so caught up in, it's gotta be by the book the way it's going to be adopted. When you guys presented tonight, changing the zoning and things. changing the zoning and things, it's for discussion. We can amend things. But it has to be open and in the public. And I think it's just a great way for everyone to have an opportunity to submit their ideas and get public, uh, public input from it. So that's the, uh, ordinance and obviously, once it's, uh, discussed publicly and either denied or adopted by the, uh, board, it would be read into, uh, the minutes for the, uh, recording and voting. Uh, and I'll make a motion now to introduce it.
First, and a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Here we go, first and second.
So I'd like to say about that one, that I, I don't see a problem with that one because the mayor can always, if, if the board would pass something, the mayor can always veto it. You know, it's like, it's not a big deal really. I mean, if he doesn't like it, he can veto it. So I don't see the problem here if we discuss things like that.
We just can't discuss it tonight, it's just an introduction, so.
Okay. Moving on to number four. Introduction of an instrument twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five. An ordinance to declare the portion of Thirteenth Street no longer necessary for public use and to provide for the exchange of that portion of the property location, located in the town of Abida Springs, St. Tammy Parish, Louisiana, and to provide for related matters. This is, uh, this is, we're, we're voting on this one? No, it's an introduction.
This is an introduction as well. Alderman Contois, did, um, Kristin Torterich speak with you a little bit about this revocation? And give you a little bit of background as the planning, uh, committee?
She did, and, I mean, are you asking me to present what she said?
Just a very big, broad overview.
Can you pull up the drawing for it? Cause it's hard to do it with that.
Let's just introduce it.
Oh.
Let's just introduce it, I think.
It's an introduction, but just to tell them what we're introducing.
Yeah, I mean, gotta at least explain it. So apparently there is, um, a family that has a property that is near St. Charles and the corner of, I apologize, I haven't met you. And, uh, Thirteenth Street, which is unconstructed. There's an existing structure that, um, is currently in a portion of the unconstructed right-of-way of Thirteenth Street as well as a very large live oak. And in short, what they would like to do is swap a portion of land that is a forested portion of land, the same amount of property, for the portion of Thirteenth Street that is unconstructed but is inhibited in, for various things. Current, the live oak, as well as some, um, old structures that have been there for years. And to see if they can do sort of a, uh, swap. So, and the reasons for that are to be able to maintain the structure that is there, to maintain the live oak that is there, and to, um, eventually use their properties for their, um, grandchildren. Did I get that right?
Now sum it up?
Just briefly.
Okay, so we don't need a motion? We do, we need a motion to introduce that?
So made.
I'll second that.
And a second. Got that.
So, um, on that one right there, I think that's a utility right-of-way, but I think there's telephone poles going down that street right there. Is that a problem? I mean, would they then allow the, the utility people to come in there and work on those wires?
The power company already, already has that right-of-way.
Has it right-of-way?
The power company already has that right-of-way.
Oh, they do?
Out there with a little blue square where the existing house is, uh, St. Charles Street was supposed to continue straight.
Right.
But they turned it. So the power line is going, pretty much going down St. Charles Street to exist the, what should have been St. Charles Street. And so that's what that is. Yeah, that's St. Char, that should have been St. Charles Street right there.
So there's no, there's no power line that runs down the green part that you're asking for?
No, no. The part I'm asking for, there's nothing there. That used to be the driveway to, that, that open existing part that I'm trying to get, used to be our driveway.
Is this the one that has the white fence across it?
No, sir, don't have no fence on it, no, sir.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong place.
It looks as though this is where the power lines are running right here. This is the portion that the town would get in exchange for this piece. You own both of these pieces. So it would make him have one large parcel. And with the pond, it creates an issue. And the tree is about right here, I believe.
Right.
No, the tree is in the front, right in the corner, right in the front of that little blue square.
Yeah, right, right here, where there's a huge.
Two feet on, two feet on Thirteenth Street.
There's a huge oak tree that is right in the way.
And with, with Thirteenth Street not going nowhere between St. Charles and St. Peters, which is not, not put in, moving the, your street over on the left side of the property, it will give you access to get to Thirteenth Street if you should ever put the street in.
I was looking, I was looking at the part where, um, they have the little white fence across there.
No, the white fence is across the street from me.
That's from, that's across the street from you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting? If you could come back in case there's any more questions, is that possible?
Oh, yes. Okay, all right.
Sorry you had to wait so long. Sorry you had to wait so long, so long.
Okay, number five. Introduction of instrument twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six. An ordinance amending the town of Abida Springs ordinance number five forty, establishing an operating budget of revenue and expenditures for the year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-one, twenty one, twenty twenty-four. Adjustment to the sections, um, five, seven, nine, uh, eleven, twelve, fifteen, and adding sections, uh, nineteen and twenty, and to provide for related matters.
This is the introduction of the budget amendment for the twenty twenty-four budget to, um, amend it to the actual, in the areas where there was five percent less revenue or five percent more expenditures. I think that there are two funds that had an overage in expenditures, which was the Public Works. And the other wasn't actually an overage, it was an unbudgeted fund. The debt service fund was not in the budget, so we're adding that. The others were, um, shortages in revenues. They were, um, over-projected. So this is just an introduction. They just received this yesterday, so I'm sure that they probably haven't even had a chance to review it. But there'll be, um, more discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, um, so we, again, this is an introduction, so I, I need somebody to, um.
So moved.
Have a first and a second?
Second.
Okay. Got that. Moving on, number six. Consideration of a resolution of the town of Abida Springs, Board of Aldermen, blah blah? Sure. It, it wasn't. I, I'm just kidding, it wasn't. Considering a resolution of the town of Abida Springs, Board of Aldermen authorizing an increase in utility rates and water and sewer services to sustainably operate and maintain town water and sewer systems, fund systems rehabilitation, meet state requirements, and support ongoing infrastructure improvements, and to provide for related matters. This is, um, this goes with the, uh, go ahead.
So this is the, um, as a result of the rate study that we were required to do through the water sector. There was a, um, recommended a fifteen percent increase in water and sewer in residential and commercial. There were some questions that were asked by the board when we initially started talking about this, about, um, other options. And so we did consider and include in this that, um, there would be, we've done some research by looking at other municipalities that are local. And, um, the increase for customers that are outside of town limits who do not pay property taxes in town and therefore do not contribute to the, um, the infrastructure, they, their increase would be, um, a, an additional fifteen percent. So the original recommended thirty percent would go to customers outside of town limits. And then also, that any new subdivisions with final approval dates after April first of twenty twenty-five with lots of fourteen or more, they would also fall under that higher rate because of course they have much more of an impact on the, um, infrastructure than our, our current residents do, so.
Can you say who that is again? The, the, I heard the ones that are outside of town limits and then what is the other?
Any new, so, any, uh, I'm reading directly from it. So it's, um, new subdivisions with final approval dates after April first of twenty twenty-five with fourteen lots or more. So if it's less than fourteen lots, it would, can be considered a, a minor subdivision. And so it would fall under the current, the rates that the current residents are paying if you are outside of town limits or if you are, and, and have access to our utilities, which we do have some areas that have that. And also, new larger subdivisions that are going to require more from our system will have the higher rates also. And so they would, they're in, their rates would be thirty percent higher than in town. And when we looked at local subdivisions, I believe, um, Madison, I, I believe every municipality had, I don't think we had Folsoms, but I think every municipality had a higher rate for those outside of town limits. I think in some, it's a hundred percent higher. Um, and some, it's, it's less than that. But most of them are, all of them are higher than the fifteen percent that we're looking at in additional rates. And, um, so that's what this is. We had considered the recommendations that you guys made.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we don't really have too much of a choice. I mean, we have potentially a choice in whether or not we do the fifteen or thirty percent, but we don't have a choice, um, for having an increase or to not have an increase because we must do that, um, according to law.
Correct. We would need to do that. We, it was part of the agreement when we, um, accepted the five million dollars in water sector funding for the sewer plant. So we have to accept at the very least the fifteen percent on water and sewer for the town. And there's also, this, I, I'm not sure that this is included in here, but one of the other things that we're required to do is to contribute, um, I think just under thirty thousand dollars a year to a sinking fund.
Yeah, for maintenance.
For maintenance.
And that's required in the five thou, I mean, the five million dollar grant?
Correct. And we've worked with water sector and with DEQ because they have different requirements when it comes to those two loans. So this rate study will also, the rate increase will also satisfy the requirements for DEQ for the loan that was taken out for the sewer system. And so this will remove that requirement of transferring funds from the general fund to the utility fund to cover the debt service. Because this was, the debt service was considered in this increase.
Plus it needs to be collected annually, uh, or monthly, I should say, it needs to be revolving revenue to pay back that DEQ loan anyway.
Right. The utility fund should be supporting itself when it comes to that.
Is there a, um, possibility of, I don't want to say age, but I mean, there are people on fixed incomes. Could we possibly do something? Does everyone have to get it? I mean, how, how do we do that and not say that we're discriminating?
There is not a way for us to do that arbitrarily in that way. What we have also committed to do is that we are evaluating the policy for the, um, Utility Assistance Fund that the town has. Right now, the way that it's set up, it is, um, very difficult for people who, um, want to access that, to be able to access that. And so we are, um, we, we use, uh, the parish's community action in order for them to get their approvals, but they don't, um, the way that they are classifying when it comes to water and sewer, they pay their gas bills very easily, but their water and sewer are not as easy to access. And so we're trying to find a better way for them to access those funds because we do have, and certainly, I, I would encourage anybody who has the means and the ability to add a little bit extra to your bills every month to contribute to that Utility Assistance Fund. It can be used by people who, um, are having issues with affording to pay their bills.
Yeah, cause our balance is not very high in the Utility Assistance Fund currently.
I think there's like five thousand or close to five thousand in the lamp account. And then there's an additional, um, couple thousand in the Citizens Bank account. And we do know the, the, the senior club collects funds every month when they meet and donates money. So it ends up being about like, you know, fifty to seventy-five dollars, which we're very thankful for. And then we have a couple of residents who do contribute through their bill every month. So it does grow and we've got, um, a majority of it is in the lamp account so that it gains a little higher interest rate.
Have we considered maybe just as property taxes are frozen at a certain age? Possibly going down that route as well? I mean, would that be a possibility? Freeze the rate? Maybe if it's age, I mean, obviously.
It's not something that we've considered. I mean, it's certainly something that you guys can consider if you want to do that.
I mean, but most of the fixed, most of the elderly people that are on fixed income, or, shouldn't say most. People that are on fixed incomes are more commonly of an age than the younger. And some of them, I mean, this could take a huge chunk out of their food, you know, the grocery money. So, um, I think we just really need to look at this and study it and see how. It has to be done. I support an increase. We have to move forward with an increase, we know that, went for the last one, twenty seventeen.
Yeah. And this is done by resolution, so it's a lot easier to, um, to pass additional things to it if you need to. So if you want to pass it as it is right here with these increases and then look, take a look at the ability to freeze, uh, for people who have frozen assessments. The, the trouble that we would have is I guess they would have to do some sort of application. And then we, I would have to find out if we have the ability to code in that way. So right now, um, we'd have to see what, what, number one, what the legalities are, and number two, with the feasibility of being able to do that through our system.
So it's required to pass the increase in some manner. Is there a required deadline for that?
Right. The, the study was supposed to be done before the year and I, I just got, they're waiting for the resolution so that they can, um, Marcus Office having completed it. I mean, it was supposed to be completed last year. We were waiting on Wagoneer, the company that they engaged.
Was the last resolution twenty, was it a resolution in twenty seventeen or an ordinance?
It was a resolution.
Could we potentially look at the possibility of, okay, if we have to increase rates, we increase rates. But that's one of the few, um, items that we actually make money at. I understand we also have to have our maintenance fund. But can we potentially look at the option of having, at the end of the year, a portion of proceeds go back to that Utility Assistance Fund?
I don't know if the town can contribute to a fund that donates money.
I think, I think it can, I'm not sure, but I think I've seen some Attorney General's.
I mean, if it's one thing that makes us revenue, we still pay our bills, we get things done.
But you also have to understand.
Making money, is it possible to contribute some back to that assistance fund?
I'd have to take a, a look at it, but I do think that, that it's worth taking a look at.
Okay.
And we also have to understand that the reason why we're having to do this is because they have found that our utilities are not profitable. They are not, they're not covering themselves. And so, um, it. And so, um, it, they took into account all of our expenditures and our debt. And that is probably the biggest thing is the debt that's associated with the sewer system and the fact that we have probably another $3 million to $4 million worth of work that needs to be done. And so we have to consider that and just so that people will be able to, I, I know it's a major concern for Alderman Bujor for there to be able to be sewer service to everybody who wants it in town.
But it would also have to see whether the grant lot allows for that.
Yeah, that's fine. We're just looking to provide the service and also not hurt people.
Yeah.
Consideration of the, the resolution, we just.
So made.
Second.
First and second.
Are we going to vote?
We're not voting, are we?
Yeah, it's a vote. So.
Consideration.
We got a public comment.
Yeah.
Right. And public comment?
We need to think about this some more, I think.
It was discussed at the last meeting and what we've given here is actually something that takes some of the relief off of the current residents.
Well, those.
But we don't have a lot of options because if not, then we have to pay back $5 million worth of money.
The percentages, were they given to us, the 15 and the 30? That was their recommendation?
15 and 15. Not, the 15 on water and the 15 on sewer is required.
Required, not an option.
Required, not optional.
With regards to the, uh, group that is being discriminated against being charged 30% as opposed to 15%, uh, is there a sunset to that or is that going forever?
Yeah, there is not a sunset whenever they pass the new resolution to pass new rates. They, they could change it at any time. It's a resolution passed by the board.
But it stays in place until it's changed.
Correct.
So they're going to be discriminated against until that happens? I mean, if, if they're paying a different rate than the rest, they're being discriminated against. And is that going on forever until it's changed? I guess it does.
There's no, there's no termination of the, the increase.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hear what you're saying, but I also think that, um, it is very common that, you know, impact fees and other things that it, that happen. New development has to pay its way forward. You can't say new development's going to have the same fees as something that's been in existence for 20 or 30 years. So, you know, that's the cost of doing business, you know? Permits cost more in 2025 than they did in, you know, 2019. So, I mean, and, and I think they also mentioned that we're only looking at 30% for, um, that extended rate, whereas other places do almost a hundred percent. So, I mean, I think as far as like the market goes, because that was one of my questions, you know, is this, um, a regular practice elsewhere? And it is. And in fact, ours are actually less expensive for new development than in other places. So we've got to find a way for future development to pay for itself. We don't even have impact fees. You know, we're losing a lot of money.
Leanne was just saying that Covington's for people outside of town is 125% higher.
Yeah, we don't have the same kind of impact fees that, and we've been talking about this for years. Um, so we really need to figure out, you know, I, I think the stagger, I think the staggered rate is a, is a smart thing for us to do, you know? And it's not like we're charging somebody who's already here. If they come and they say, I want to develop, then that's the cost of that development. They have to work towards that. So, I mean, that's just my perspective.
So I'm going to throw this out for what it's worth, uh, to, to Alderman Contos' point. Trying to, um, give a little bit of a break on some of the elderly people, there's always the ability to modify the rate structure so that, because I think the breakpoint now is first 2,000 gallons of water is a fixed. You could set a rate that's 1,000 gallons and reduce that amount. Then it's based on consumption, thinking that if it's an elderly woman, she's not going to use 2,000 gallons, so it's, her cost is going to be less. Just throwing that out to think about it.
That's another way of adjusting the percentage, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't bring that rate study with me, but I think that what they had in that rate study, um, isn't going to, it's not, it's too small. I mean, they're basing it on 2,000 gallons and most people use a lot more than that. I mean, we'd have to look at what the average of people, they said that's an average, but I don't know what they averaged to get that 2,000 gallons, but I, I think people use a lot more than that, probably maybe four. So it's probably going to be double what they said, everybody's going to be $100 a year for residential. It's probably going to be more than that, but.
I believe that the presentation that we did at the last meeting took our actual numbers with our aver- average usage and what, and on our average customer, we're looking at $100 a year, just over, I think it was like 106 maybe was what it was, $100, $106 a year increase.
I, I think that's what it was, but I, I thought that that was way low.
That was not their numbers. That was from us taking our average, looking at our actual billing and what our average usage is.
Okay.
It equates to about 148,000 a year, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
It equates to about $148,000 a year.
I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Anybody else in the audience got anything? Who wants to? Let's happy do, happy do.
Well, I certainly think we ought to obey the law and take the opinion of experts, but there's one question I think you might want to take a look at, and that's the ratio prices between the water and the sewage, which has always gotten some complaints because , uh, basing the, the sewage cost directly on the water cost doesn't take into account the stuff that doesn't go in the sewer, like watering your lawn. And, and that can be a substantial amount of water, but it doesn't go in the sewer. So there ought to be, I think, uh, some way to take that into account or at least not to make it so direct, uh, a relationship between the amount of water you're charged for and the amount of sewage you're charged for. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we should all say our names. Sissy Wigan first. I agree with Stuart again. I started asking Janet about this two or three years ago. I live alone and when I have to water a lot in those crazy months, to get that bill that shows how much water I use and the sewage is half is crazy. It's just based on water. I don't flush my toilet all that many times. So I would, I don't know if there's any way to do it. I think Janet has explained this to me, that it's very difficult and complicated, but I have friends who live in Virginia and they have, they're charged when they water their yard separately from sewage. So I would love it if we could do that.
We can do that here, but you, you would have to have a separate meter.
Right. You can have a separate meter installed to monitor just the, where you're watering from.
Right. And then, then there wouldn't be a.
And then usually I think one time a year, if there's somebody who is like, when summer's coming along and there's a swimming pool, I think if you bring the proof that, that that's happened, then they will, um, adjust your bill for you on that. But I don't know how we would do that just on, on watering. So I think they offer the ability to install a separate meter for that, that could be metered just on the water usage, not on the sewer.
But you said that was pretty expensive to do, right?
I'm not sure what the cost is, the meter.
You'd have to have a new meter and a new line.
By installing a meter, I, you have your say.
Oh, easy.
Okay. Thank you.
But if you do it often, it may be worth getting in touch with Kristen to have a conversation to see if you could get a quote on what the price would be.
And I do have the, um, the rate study. It says that the implementation of the proposed rate adjustments, um, the recommend, the required date of completion is March of 2025.
Yeah. So it's got to be in this one. Okay, so the question's been called, so.
So what would the price be if somebody was using 5,000 gallons? What would their bill go up?
I, I don't, the, do we have access to that, um, presentation from last time? Because it broke it down in the levels for if you were just doing the base?
I think she had, um, calculated that for the average residential customer, it would decrease their bill approximately $88 a year.
Right, well.
2,000 gallons?
That's on 2,000 gallons.
That was the average.
That was the average. The base level is, it's, is you pay a, a flat rate at the base level. That was, can you pull up that?
She had those numbers in that presentation.
She did. I think that might be when we.
Oh. Sandra's got it.
Thank you. So the average is $8.40 a month for residential.
And that's for 2,000 gallons?
That's for our average water user. So that's when you take into account the actual usage of our customer. So, um, correct. So somebody who is at a base rate, looks like it's $2.83 increase per month.
But how many gallons is that?
That's at our base rate, so that's 2,000 and below.
2,000 and below.
Okay. Do you have the sewer too?
Yeah, it looks like sewer is $5.57.
Residential base rate would go from $12 to $13.80. So it's a $1.80 increase per month over 2,000 gallons.
Okay, you don't. Okay, so for water, it would be a $1.80 at the base rate and 45 cents for every 1,000 gallons over 2,000. So, um, sewer.
Yep.
Sewer's more expensive, so it increases a little bit more than that. It would be, the base rate would go up $4.20 a month.
That's not too bad. And what, what assurances do we have that, that all that money will be used for utilities? Is it dedicated?
Going directly into the utility fund.
Okay.
Those accounts are no longer combined.
All right. I think you called the question.
Yes, it was. Um, so do we have a, we have a, a first?
We have a first.
We had a first and a second?
Yes.
Okay, so all we need to do is vote.
Right.
Does it have to be a roll call? No roll call vote. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
I, I really, I'm doubtful about it, so I didn't, I really didn't vote.
So you're, so you abstain?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so that's the end of new business and now we go to old business. Alex, wake up over there. Thank you. It's, it's coming. It's coming. It's coming.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, um, consideration of instrument 2025 001, in ordinance of the Board of Alderman and Town of Abita Springs to make amendments to the text of Part 9, Planning and Zoning and Development, Chapter 2, Zoning Regulations, Section 9-218, Commercial District, Section 9-218.2, C2, Highway Commercial District, and Section 9-205, Definitions to Update Standards and Clarity Existing Regulations Based Upon the Abita Springs Master Plan. Wow, that's a mouthful.
It's a lot. We like to be, so did you just read both of them or just the first?
That's just the first one.
Okay, the first one is the map, right?
No.
Okay, all right, sorry. It's a long meeting. We're going to get there. Um, okay, so I did have a chance to look at the notes from the public comments and I actually think that interpreted, the interpretation about the gas stations can be made as it's written now. So you don't have to make an amendment to change that, um, if you don't want to, right? So we can clarify that later and there's nothing preventing the staff from interpreting it as two pumps means four cars. Uh, and that will keep in the character of having small gas stations now. And if there are those in the public who are opposed to having future gas stations, I would encourage y'all to come to the planning and zoning meetings that Regan had mentioned earlier because we're going to be talking about permitted uses and this district, so it's going to be a lot of opportunity to discuss those things. Um, I think the other option was specifically about parking. That, that was the other one, I think, if y'all wanted to make an amendment, it seems like the decision either is either to just strike it and rely on the other options or to leave it in. And so that's, I just want to provide that feedback.
Right. I just made a note of, I know because you weren't here for the whole public comment part, but, um, there was the car repair and gas station that several people said that they were not in favor of. There's the clarification of the pumps, which you just talked about is not necessary to be part of an amendment. Um, there was a request from, um, EJ to not allow for neon signage, which if you, if I understand correctly, since it's all historic, doesn't need to be put in there.
Right, exactly. Y'all are covered by historic, exactly.
For parking, we could just strike it completely and rely on the parking ordinance. It's already in the ordinance, which would be more correct anyway. And there was a request about encouraging cross connectivity, um, between commercial properties, commercial developments. And there was a request of, um, potentially a hotel that's 20 to 30 rooms as opposed to the less than 10.
And that I think is a similar.
Well, it potentially, I guess, could have been in this district because Stuart pointed out that there are some larger undeveloped properties in this district.
Great. And I think in keeping with what we have right now, it's, it's more reflective of what's in the master plan. So if we scale down or up from it, I would, I would suggest having it as part of a larger debate about permitted uses in general, unless y'all feel really strongly about it being less or more today.
Can you say that one more time?
So in terms of the hotel density, like, so the question of how many rooms would, may or may not be permitted, we're pulling information from your master plan's recommendations, which is informed by a lot of community input. And so if we're going to shift in terms of density and land use on a permitted use type, we're going to be having those debates as part of the larger rezoning process. And so I think, you know, if it, if it doesn't really feel wrong, then I would say leave it and then.
It's not necessary at this time.
Exactly. We can, we can keep it, but know that we have to revisit it as part of, part of the larger permitted use C-bol discussion.
Okay.
Unless you, unless y'all are like, we do not want this and y'all all collectively agree you don't want it.
Now, there was a, what'd you say about cop a permits? Once a permit is issued?
So, I remember that. I was here for that comment.
Yeah.
Right, this was where you, you know, you had requested, and don't get me wrong, um, because I'm freezing, rephrasing, um, where there would needed to be a statement in the code that said if you require, if you complied with all of these standards, a permit had to be issued. And I would caution against adding that language because these are just land use regulations. They're not building standards, they're not occupancy, which are different things. You still need to go through fire marshal, you still need to get your certificate of occupancy, you still need to pay your fees. So this is like facilitating one aspect of a permitting process, specifically like site plan review.
So this is where it goes.
So I wouldn't recommend adding that language because you're going to end up in more trouble. But I understand the instinct for it in terms of efficiency and accountability.
Parking we could strike, hotel size, don't worry about now?
I think we, we're going to make the note to bring it into the larger discussion and, and collect more community input on it.
Neon signs?
Same, historic district's going to cover that. I think you're okay leaving it, leaving it without adding that specificity at this time.
It's already not allowed.
Right. Right.
So can, can we pass this as amended, even though it's not amended yet, as long as?
Yeah, we can amend it tonight, just to strike the parking and be done with it.
Right, you have to unanimously approve the amendment. We're just trying to figure out what the amendment is, right?
So.
Okay. A majority, y'all, sorry, y'all's charters, um, y'all would know better than I. Some other charters require unis.
So I can only speak for myself, but I would say I'm of the opinion that, you know, strike the parking, pass the rest of it, and then consider the option in the future of removing car repair and gas station, or modifying that to be more specific for small. But that's just my opinion.
Could we at least change that part tonight from pumps to fuel dispensers, that word?
I think that's, I think that it, the fuel dispensers could be confusing, cause then you're looking at how many tubes are coming out of there. It's, it's really.
It's really referring to the structure that the both cars pull up to, which is the full pump. So, like, that's the pump. It's pulling the, the gas from, from the ground.
We have that defined somewhere.
Well, I think the language in, in St. Tammy says, like, so many.
Right, we, we will interpret it and work with the town staff to make sure they're interpreting it this way, but I think we can edit it at a later date.
Okay.
And, and Alex, if you're striking that parking, doesn't it just revert to the code which says one for 300? So it's the same exact thing?
Right, it, it goes back to that.
You're removing it to, you're amending the ordinance to remove that, and that's already what the code says.
Well, are you saying the code said?
It's one, it's one parking space per 300 square feet, right?
They're removing the piece that specifically says you could have more than 20% of the area of the site be dedicated to parking, correct? That's what y'all are talking about. So it's a different standard than the one per 300.
I, I misunderstood.
Don't worry, Janet, you've got a lot on your plate.
I know, no, I missed, I missed that. I thought y'all were saying you didn't want the 300, that you wanted to have more parking.
Or less, depending on what business.
Yeah, we need more parking.
There's a section in there that says that you can only use up to 20% of the area for parking. And we don't think that would potentially be sufficient in some places, because even if you did one to 300, that might be more than 20% of your site, just because parking takes up a lot of space.
Right.
So, uh, we had talked about that at the previous meeting as well.
And the specific edit, just so we're very clear, right? Cause amendments, you wanna make sure, this, we're talking about line 343 on page eight, and it reads very specifically, build, oh, sorry, 344. It's, buildings should have no more than 20% of their lots devoted to surface parking lots, with no individual lot larger than two acres. Uh, and, and this is consistent with the master plan, in that you've, you've gotta think about 20% of your lot, you've got a building, setbacks, landscaping, after all of that is taken out, you know, it's 20% of the full lot, which is still kind of a lot, but I think we're worried about that not being, providing ample enough parking.
And isn't this the requirements that Ashner has, um, had to abide by?
They haven't, cause these are not adopted yet. So these are not being.
They had to get approval in order to do theirs, because we were under a moratorium, and I believe that they had to follow that, and, and with their landscaping and their.
So we don't do the, we're, I can't speak directly to, to, uh.
I guess what I'm saying is, is that Ashner, the Ashner property that's being developed had to abide by what the master plan said when it came to parking, and they did not have an issue with abiding by that rule. They were able to present a parking area that was to the side and to the back of their lot, of their building, that has planted islands in there, every so many spaces, to give a beautiful treeed parking area that is not so much, I, I am worried that there's gonna be huge cement parking lots if we remove that requirement.
Well, and I think the, the key here is keeping in mind that the importance is making a decision at this point in time, and that if, if the community reinforces this, there's an opportunity to revisit it. If y'all feel like you might cause more harm in the short term by including it, you can remove it, but if you're, if, we can always revisit it. Cause I do think we've heard from multiple community members about the concern of just in general paving, right? And thinking about alternate ways of incorporating things that are not concrete to support drainage concerns.
What was the intent of including these parking requirements?
These parking requirements are coming from your master plan document, and the idea is to limit the amount of surface parking on sites that are less than two acres. And so, just so that you don't have a sea of parking. Um, and so it's a proportion that's used. That's the intent, but, you know, that's not to say, you know, you can't, you're, you would regulate that based on your current code if this were removed. Right, it could be like a Walgreens or an Autozone. That, that's what you're, that's what you, you're, you're looking at more of. And that's not to say that that's bad. I think what we're hearing is that there just needs to be more debate about this, and so we're comfortable, I think, recommending striking it, knowing that we just need to revisit it more and discuss it more with, with the public. If y'all want, if y'all want to do that.
Look at actual site plans to see if that percentage is like.
Right, we can do that, we can do that.
You know, we could debate all day, but it's like, when the, does the drawing work or not, is really what it comes down to.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So, does anybody else have any comments from the public? Oh, it's not a public again.
So we've, um, provided an amendment to reformat the original ordinance without really changing the text. It's, um, it's just, it, it's just been the removal of the strike throughs. So we just changed the, what needs to go into the code versus what was explanatory. Okay, so that's what's in your packet right now. So you can make an amendment. How can we do this, Edward? So if they stroke, struck through the parking requirement, how could we?
The, the amendment, the amendment basically replaces what was introduced, and it's drafted in the form of a, of an ordinance, as, as opposed to drafted in the form of instructions on how to draft the ordinance. So what we can do is just take the lines out of the amendment, so that when we replace the ordinance, those lines won't be in there. So that we could just, uh, delete, we could introduce the amendment minus lines.
344?
No, no, no.
Now, look at your amendment.
Minus lines, is this right? 264 through what? How far down are we going?
264 to, look at 264 to 272.
On the, on the amendment. And see, yeah, because part of it has to deal with bicycles, and see if you wanna delete that too.
264 to 272?
Yeah.
Just take that whole section out?
Well, we don't know, you have to look at what it says.
Uh, 270 and 271 and 272 deal with bicycles, so I don't know what you all wanna do with that.
What is the page number on the sheet you're looking at?
Five.
Page five. Keep going past, it's in the back of what you have. Keep going, salt's over. Keep going, more.
Oh, the strike throughs, I got you.
The amendment is before the strike through, the original.
Right, so I think what y'all are proposing to do is amend the proposed ordinance specifically line 268, striking line 268, which is just 20% parking lots and the two acre requirement, and then renumber accordingly, right? So you're gonna renumber that section without that number three. And the other edit that y'all had, I think there was another number that was off, we can do that as well, that's not substantial, you don't have to make that part of the amendment.
If we just strike 268 and 269?
If you wanna also remove the bicycle parking.
No, 269 and the car.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Leanne.
268 and 269.
268 and 269, that's correct. Thank you, Councilwoman Sessi.
Alex, is, is 267, does that read properly? Does that "and" or "on" should that be?
Should say "on."
Have their surface parking lots placed.
Buildings should have their surface parking lots placed "and."
Right, that should say "on," but that's another non-substantial amendment. You don't have to make that as part of a motion, we can clarify that.
Well, we'll change it right now.
Yeah.
And what, did you also catch that technical correction of, uh, the fact that there were multiple 28s and 29s items?
Right, so, yeah, technical corrections, just to make your motion simple, like, you don't have to put the technical corrections in an ordinance as an amendment.
So can I just make a motion to amend it as discussed? The numbers that came out of Alex's mouth.
Second.
Striking 268 and 269, and renumbering that section accordingly.
So introducing the amendments that we all have in front of us, except we're deleting from those amendments lines 268.
269, and we're changing the word "and" to "on" in 267.
Correct, done, finished.
We have a first and a second?
Yeah.
We have a second?
Yeah.
She was first, I was second.
Yep. Yeah, we got public, public comment. Go ahead, Stuart. You don't get to go up for open section, though.
I'd like to say that I did indeed bring up the gas station issue at planning and zoning, and they just, no, none of the planning and zoning said, yes, we need gas stations. Nobody said anything like that, they just went on and passed it to you. They kicked the can to you, because you're the ones who have to decide on stuff like that, and you shouldn't be passing an ordinance where you know you're going to change it. I mean, if, you should be able to agree on something simple, like whether the town needs more gas stations in its central part of town or not, and, or discuss it if, if anybody disagrees. I haven't heard anybody say we really need more gas stations, just a question of whether they would build them, or, or, or what. I mean, it, it's only one line, because it's an item in the long list of things that you're allowing in the commercial zone. So it should be extremely easy to take that out if that's your intent, and if it's not your intent, then you're allowing somebody to come in and build another gas station, and I don't see why you would wanna do that. Thank you.
I think they have to have free air.
I'm having trouble wrapping my head around the concept of limiting parking to 20%. What is the rationale behind that?
We deleted that, we took that out.
It's out.
Out, completely, done. Not a thing.
Well, thank you, I won the argument.
Okay, so, anybody else? That's it? All right, you wanted, does that have to be, has to be a roll call vote? All right, roll call vote for the amendment.
Aye.
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 All right, now let's go to number two.
No, we gotta pass the amended.
Now we gotta pass as amended.
1130.
Okay, so now I need a motion to pass it as amended. We have a first.
Second.
All right, and now we open up again.
Hearing none.
Stuart doesn't want a gas station, we understand.
Okay, hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right, so now we go to number two. Consideration of the instrument.
No, we're getting this done, she's like, don't.
Consideration of an instrument 2025-002, in ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the Town of Abita Springs, to make amendments to the official zoning map to separate the commercial historic and residential historic zoning designations into the base districts and the historic overlay district, and to make amendments to the text of the Code of Ordinances, Part 9, Planning and Zoning and Development, Chapter 2, Zoning Regulations, Section 9-222, Historic District, uh, to clarify the district as an overlay and remove regulations that are defined in base zoning districts.
I move to adopt the instrument as presented.
Yeah, as, as the.
How fast did you move?
Yeah, that one was amended.
Yeah, that was amended.
Uh, as amended, I said, that's what I meant to say. Came out wrong, sorry.
As amended.
As amended.
All right, so we have a first.
And a second.
And a second. Comments on this one? Okay, hearing none.
It's clean up, it's good.
Aye.
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 Now I need a motion to adopt as amended. First, second. Cossy first.
You first.
Patterson second. B, public comment? No, Stu.
Sir's not happy. Sir's not happy, and we kept him up. My prayer for peace worked.
We actually got Patterson to agree with all of us.
Oh, lordy.
Aye.
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 Okay.
She took planning and zoning and bring us to hell.
Yeah, now we have open adjournment, so anybody, anything you wanna say? Alex, you wanna stick around and say something?
This is about gas station.
You don't have to go real far now.
Something entirely unrelated, I was really hoping I'd get to say this near the beginning of the meeting, before everybody fell asleep or left. But, uh, the Friends of the Park are still around, I'm still on it, and we're doing some interesting things that I think, uh, the public, at least here, if, if anybody's at home late at night watching this, uh, should know about. We're trying to beautify the town as best we can by giving away live oaks. They're five gallon live oaks, they're in cooperation with the, the Half Moon folks, and they're totally free, but you gotta plant them. And this is, uh, it's getting late to plant them, so a rush. If you, if you think you have in your yard a good spot for a live oak, uh, contact John Preble, and he's easy to contact, you can, you can find him online, or, or at his museum. One of the other things that we're doing is, uh, we're, we bring in a teacher for pine needle basket weaving, and, uh, you have to pay for the lessons, but on April 5th and on May 24th, we'll have, uh, pine needle weaving. Some people find that fascinating. And finally, on the 12th of April, we're gonna have, uh, picture opportunities at the hotel with, uh, the seasonal animals, and, uh, again, that'll be free. Thank you.
I wasn't talking.
Two minutes.
Sissy Wigan, Abita, please go to vote for the libraries. First day, early voting on the 22nd, some of us have spent 40 hours at library meetings. There are people in this parish bound and determined to kill the millage, which will kill the new Locom Library, which will kill so many great things. Please vote for the libraries, thank you.
Sandra Slyfer with Keep Abita Beautiful, I just wanna give a quick thank you to the people in the Town of Abita Springs, uh, that came out and supported the Nacha Mama's Gumbo Cookoff on Sunday, thank you, Janet, that Taylor and Angie, uh, at, at the town worked their butts off, that they worked with us, this is a joint effort with KAB and the town, and that I think that the consensus was that we had another very successful event, and that we look forward to doing it again next year, so, thank y'all.
Well, Mayor, you might wanna pay close attention to this one. I'm familiar. I'm familiar with this accounting firm. I'm familiar with this CPA firm, and they're excellent. Good choice on your part. We will now be getting numbers that we can rely upon. You have all heard the term garbage in is garbage out. It relies, it relates to computers and numbers. Numbers become a problem when, one, they're not accurate. They become garbage. Or, two, they've been assigned to the wrong account, either for revenue side or expense side. It becomes garbage. And if it's not timely presented, it becomes garbage. I'm optimistic now that we're going to have numbers that are valid, properly disseminated and distributed, and timely. Good job. And Janet, I've done what you've done, and I know what kind of headache that is. I've been brought in by chairmans of companies to reproduce the books from three and four years back. You run through a bunch of Tylenol doing that. So thank you for your effort. Public service announcement. I understand the rec center is open in the evening for Pilates?
Thursday nights. I don't know when it's going to start, but yeah, at the rec center. So I guess check the rec center website, and hopefully we'll get that started soon, Thursday nights. I think it's going to be six to seven, but don't quote me on that. Just take a look, and we'd love to get a class going, so.
Was that you that posted something about the board the other day? The font on the board or something, electronic board? Can we not post these things on that board? What's going around town?
We do post, the, the people post everything at home on, on there.
You mean for the rec center?
Not for the rec center. If they sent them something, they probably would.
Who's that?
The rec center sent information to me and Taylor. They could put it on there.
I'd love to see the word get out, because I, I think it started from me wanting to do a yoga class and not ever having one that was available for working people, because they're almost during the day. So anyway, we're trying to get something started at the rec center, so that would be great if we could get the word out, so.
Check it out, and we'll see if we can get it posted.
Yeah.
Somewhere, once the dates are set.
And for clarification purposes, I'm hearing in the street that there's an attempt to kill the goose that's laying the golden egg by losing the Fall Fest. Is there any truth to this? Did, did he say why?
He said, he bought one.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's, that, that. I mean, he does, he doesn't make money on the deal. The issue is, I think he's donated about $70,000 over the last five years to organizations, charities around town. We had the same issue last year. The town just wants to charge $10,000 rental fee for the park. Have the stuff disassembled by midnight, is that correct? He mentioned some other things, hiring town employees. Well, okay, regardless of the miscommunication, y'all didn't communicate enough because he's canceled it, as you guys have, as you know that. It's an unfortunate thing. It brings in about 5,000 people a year, or I think last year he said about 5,000 people had brought in. It's, if we're going to treat people equally, we need to treat people equally.
All right, now, you know, first off, you need to, you need to know what you're talking about when you say it.
Okay, what, what parts incorrect?
All of it, just about.
Okay, well.
There was no money that was even talked about. What we said was, we came with the paper that we didn't charge them $10,000 last year. We charged them $3,000 last year. We charged them 10 the year before that. That was the, the agreement that we made as it went up from five to 10, et cetera. So that was the normal thing. We came in this time, and we had the $10,000 on a piece of paper, but never said anything about it. He says, I can't, I'm not going to pay $10,000. I said, we're not even looking for $10,000, Anthony.
Okay, I read the piece of paper, Mayor. I, I read everything on the piece of paper.
I'm glad you did. You going to let me finish?
Yes, go ahead and tell you.
He has the floor, let him finish.
The, the, the fact is, is that what we left right over there, and my comment to him was, let's do a CEA, we work together. We come up with a project that not only you with Fall Fest and the town, we'll get some other businesses in well, as well, and we'll do a project in the park. He goes, like, what? Like moving the playground out of the flood area. He goes, can that be done in sections? Suppose we don't make it? I said, yes, it can be done in sections. We can do two pieces this year, two pieces next year, or whatever. And that's how it was left. And then he sent an email two days later.
Okay, you're right. It was $10,000 on the paper to hire two town employees, run the festival at $25 an hour, to have the teardown done by midnight, Saturday night, and to come in and clean up after themselves.
No, didn't, no, you see, you're.
Hold on, let me finish, I'll tell you exactly.
You're wrong again, though.
To come in and clean, to come in, they could start at four o'clock on Sunday, after four o'clock, or in lieu of that, they could pour a foundation for a new playground.
Nobody even talked about.
That's in the black and white paper that he received.
That, that was never even talked about. There was, there was never even talked, I, I didn't read.
Mayor, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Look, the bottom line is.
That's in black and white.
We are going to have people working down in the park. You know why? Because we're not going to get bashed on Facebook because his girlfriend or wife or whatever decided to change the bathrooms because somebody stuck a whole goddamn roll of toilet paper down it. So we're not going to have it zip tied and then heard post the kind of crud that she posted. That's not going to happen. The bottom line is, is that you're hearing one side of the story.
I read it, sir, in black and white.
I don't care what you read, I was here. And if you want to bring Anthony back over here, I'll stand in front of him and I'll tell him to his face.
That the paper.
That's not true.
The paper that he was handed is not correct, that he and Karen.
I don't know what he was handed. I don't know what he was handed.
Mayor, then if you don't know what he was handed, then you need to talk to your staff.
When we left out of here, the agreement.